I want to call to order the December 12th, Monday, 2022 finance meeting at Durfee High School. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Ms. Carrera?
Here.
Ms. Rodrick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. At this time, Ms. Rodrick is joining us by Zoom for the finance meeting. We salute the flag, please. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Is there any citizens in?
No.
There is not. Item number three, committee of the whole, is to discussion and vote to refer the HVAC and lighting improvements to various schools as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Pacheco.
Good evening, everyone. We have a team from Amaresco here to answer your questions, and we have handed you a document, some of which is part of the document that was previously given to you at the last meeting. But there are some pages in here that address the finance piece of this, and I'll ask Hal Myers from Amaresco to come up and give you a brief presentation.
Thank you to the Finance Subcommittee, to having us in here this evening. We appreciate your time. And as Ken had mentioned, we were here last month before the whole school committee, and we were asked to come back to the Finance Subcommittee to basically, obviously, talk finance. So, as Ken mentioned also, you have a PowerPoint which is very similar to what we went through last session. So I'm not going to really go through slide by slide and really try to, because I'm sure you have other things going on as well in your Finance Committee sub-meeting here. So I wanted to just touch on... I brought some of my folks here today, our Amaresco team, Director of Development and his assistant, as well as VP of Finance and also VP of Sales. And again, my name is Hal Meyer, and I'm Amaresco's Account Manager for the city of Fall River. And I've been doing this with Fall River since 2008. And just by way of reference, Fall River was one of the first communities to go out for bid for an energy management services contract such as this. And that was back in 2008 when Governor Patrick signed the Green Communities Act. And we've done now four phases of projects with Fall River. This would be...we skipped phase five, this will be phase six. So I wanted to just basically, just really draw a couple differences. I know a lot of folks aren't really familiar with energy management services contracting, but it's really not much different than just traditional plan and spec like your MSBA project for the Durfee High School here. The only difference is that was procured under Mass Law, Chapter 149. This energy management service, which is administered by the MSBA, and then this program is administered by Department of Energy Resources, and it's considered Chapter 25A. And some of the key differences between Chapter 25A and Chapter 149 is, in large part, it's a financial difference as well, whereas Chapter 149 is low bid, plan and spec. Chapter 25A is design, build, paid in whole, or paid back in part by energy savings. The other difference with Chapter 149, Chapter 25A, is filed subbids. There's no such thing as filed subbids. I don't know how many folks know about how filed subbids work. They don't typically work all that well, because what happens is the general contractor, which is what Amaresco would be on this project, Amaresco can choose the subcontractors in conjunction with the city and the school department, whereas Chapter 149, as would happen with Durfee High School, the general contractor is picked, and then he, or he or she, the general contracting company inherits, if you will, all the low bid filed subcontracts. And they have no say about it. They can't say, "Well, I don't want this contractor. I don't want that material that they're going to supply." It's all in the plan and specs. Any deviation from the plan and spec is going to be a change order, which is a word that we don't use in Chapter 25A. So Chapter 25A, everything's built to the available budget, and there are no change orders. Those are some of the primary differences between Chapter 25A and Chapter 149. And basically, when we bid these projects, we bid them, thank you, we bid them with, per the RFP that was written, that was administered by the Department of Energy Resources, their bid with fixed multipliers for services as well as for overhead and profit. So at the last meeting, when Ms. Aguirre mentioned, "How do we make our money?" Well, we make our money, just like a general contractor makes their money on any other building project. I'm building a project, I'm doing addition on my house right now, and I picked a general contractor, and we are going with a, it's an open book cost-plus project, because that's what I'm used to doing. So he signed a contract with me, and he's marking his subcontractors, which I'm picking in conjunction with him, and he's going to mark up the project 12% plus 10% for profit. In contrast to the City of Fall River project, Amaresco's offering to the city, to the schools, is a overhead of 12% and a profit margin of 8%. And importantly, too, and this is a very subtle difference between us and, our major competitors are, we're not a household name. Our major competitors are household names like Honeywell, Johnson Controls, Siemens. Those are our three main competitors. And we tend to win most of the projects from them, because our overhead and profit tends to be somewhat lower. We are the largest independent energy service company in North America, I want to point out. We have a corporate office in Framingham. We have over 100 people there, in addition to the half a dozen people I brought tonight. We have 100 people back in the office that are also going to support this project. But the point being is that we're an independent. We don't represent any product or service, and we're able to bid our projects at a lower overhead and profit than our much bigger competitors. They're bigger, not in the energy services marketplace, but they're bigger in terms of their products and their services offerings. So having said that, again, I just want to cut right to the chase. The way we make our money is like a general contractor makes their money. We pay our subs, we pay for the material, we mark it up 12% for overhead, and we don't compound the overhead and the profit, which a lot of companies do. Though, I don't know if you know what that means, but basically, they'll calculate the overhead, then they'll tack on the profit. We basically add them up separately. So we'll take all the direct costs, put an overhead on it, take that sum, add it to the same sum with an 8% markup on the profit side. And there is one slide in the presentation that shows kind of how that works. I think And basically, this is all, this comes right from the RFP document. There was a table in the RFP document that had us fill out these dollar figures in an example format. So this project is $15 million, and you can see how the numbers basically add up. So I misspoke a little bit before. Not only is Amaresco the general contractor, we're also the developer and the engineers for the project. So unlike, again, drawing analogy with Durfee High School, you basically had a general contractor, you had design engineers, both for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, so forth and so on, architect. All those things are done by Amaresco. So we are more than just a general contractor, and we're providing engineering services as well as construction management services. Oh, and before I forget, another key item, unlike, again, not to compare everything with Durfee High School, but I can only imagine how many years Durfee High School was in the planning, and then ultimately the build. I'm pretty sure it took over a decade to get everything accomplished. Whereas with Chapter 25A, it's a much more streamlined and quick process. In particular, that's very important here with the ESAR funding. There are certain deadlines in order to capitalize on the grants. And with a Chapter 149 project at this day and time, I don't think there'd be a possible way to do the bidding, you know, the plan and spec, the bidding process, the filed subbids, and get a project built and operational by 2024, which is what's required by the ESAR grant. That's really all I have. If you have any questions on how the finances come together, we'd be happy to address that.
Any questions for?
I do, ma'am.
Mr. Aguirre?
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, we just got this today, so I'm trying to read it as I'm listening as well. The, when I first mentioned it last time, I always heard your company is just energy savings, and this sounds more like just you're going to be a contractor. The energy savings piece of this is not necessarily the major part of it? Is that a big difference than what you typically did for the city?
That, our business, basically, our business is to find as much energy savings as we possibly can to address the cap. A lot of folks think about these projects being energy savings projects. They are, but they're really, it's really, the way I see it, anyway, it's really another way for the city, any school department, anywhere, to kind of keep up with their building stock. I mean, there's just no way that you can do it with the available funds that you have. This is just another way to kind of formulate, you know, the MSBA has a way to formulate funds to help out Fall River. Energy savings under Chapter 25A is a way that we can help facilitate improvements to the building. So it's really, it's really, Mr. Aguirre, it's very similar to a construction. It is a construction project. It just has to be paid for in slightly different ways than a traditional construction project would be paid for.
So we're not paying the 15, whatever you said it was, 15 million?
The good news about the 15 million, it's coming from the ESAR grant. Unlike most projects that we do, the way the law is written is that the project must be paid for in whole or in part by energy savings. So you can contribute a dollar of energy savings, or you can contribute $14 million of capital. And the good news about this project is that the ESAR is going to cover the whole. Normally, the energy savings would be like, kind of like the mortgage payment. So normally, like, on my house, I've got to pay now an additional mortgage for my addition on my house, whereas if I did an energy savings project, like the last four phases that we did with Fall River, the energy savings paid the mortgage payment, if you will.
So why wouldn't we just do it the way we did it before, then? Why is it beneficial for us to pay the whole thing now, if you're telling me we have, I'm looking here, something like 3 million somewhere I read in here? So why would we, you're saying we had the option to not pay the 3 million and take the energy savings, but you want us to pay the whole thing ahead of time?
Well, what you're getting, you're getting an ESAR grant. So you could use the energy savings to pay it back, but the energy savings could now be used for educational purposes. So you don't need to use that energy savings to pay back.
But what if we don't get the energy savings? I think that's the part that I'm missing.
You'll get the energy-
Sounds like you're guaranteeing $3 million and-
This program is also oftentimes referred to as guaranteed energy savings projects. So we guarantee that the city of Fall River will get roughly $165,000 a year. That $165,000 a year is not enough to pay back, if you will, a $15 million capital. Not that you have to pay it back, but if it was a regular project that was $15 million, there wouldn't be enough energy savings to pay back that loan. But we do this all the time, where there's, the other contributing factor to this, Mr. Aguirre, is going to be utility company rebates. We have about 3/4 of a million dollars worth of utility rebates coming towards the project as well. And then we also seek out, there's likely going to be other grants that we can come across once we're in the design phase and in implementation phase.
Can you tell me where in this document what you just said is in here, or missing something?
Oh, the utility rebates? I wonder if we have that in, if we quantify that in here? That might not be in here, Mr. Aguirre. That might only be in the pro forma, which we actually brought that with us tonight. This is the actual design, this is the investment grade audit document that forms the basis of the design of the project.
I think it's a lot of money. I mean, personally, I think this is a lot of money. When you look at, somewhere in here, it says people on our team were here. Looked at this?
Oh, yes.
Looked at the director of maintenance, the guy who's working on all these. Is he here tonight?
No, he is not. Mr. Pacheco, who is the COO, is the one who is leading the project.
So if I could just take about 10 steps backwards and say, the streetlight project for the city of Fall River was done through Amaresco. The entire project was X amount of dollars, for which we knew we were going to save roughly $300,000 a year. In this business, they call it low-lying fruit. The return on investment is quick. It happens instantly. There are some projects, like the rooftop units at City Hall, and Amaresco project, the rooftop units are a long payback, 45 years, 35 years, 25 years. You're going to get your money back, but it's going to take that long to get it. So you take a project, and you cobble it all together, the low-lying fruit with the long lead time, put it all together, and come up with a project that works for about a 20-year payback. The city would bond for this. So ESAR money is there, which is not forcing the city to borrow, because our ask would be to the city of Fall River, "I need you to bond $15 million so we can do this work." With the ESAR money, we don't have to do that. So we're going to see those savings on our side, and in turn, free up money that we currently are using to pay energy costs and allow us to use it for other things in the district. So the $15 million is for all of the equipment and all of the labor to do all of this work that's listed in this document. But it's not, we're going to pay this $15 million whether Amaresco comes on board or not, because it's a construction project. What we're getting with this project is the analysis that's going to show us what our savings are, and that Amaresco guarantees those savings. As a guarantee, it's every one of the projects that have been done. I'm not quite sure what phase we're on. So Phase 6. This is the sixth time we've put together these projects. Most of them are on the city side. And I can say that when it was on the city side, we didn't offer a lot of these projects to the school department, because there was no value to the city to do that. Because at the end, it was just going to increase the amount of money that the city is going to actually spend on this side of the ledger as opposed to the other side. If we save a dollar on electricity, we get to spend a dollar plus, because that other cost is already into the mix. So on this side of the house, if we're able to fund this without going to the city, the city wins, because we're investing $15 million into our buildings, that eventually, they would have to borrow, without a doubt. All the things we're going to do, Henry Lord is not eligible for another year for an ARP project, which was just put on hold indefinitely. So then MSBA can figure out how they're going to pay for these projects, because the costs are rising so quickly. So right now, I have no other option but this for Henry Lord. I have no other option for Talbot. None. So whatever we don't do through Amaresco or through ESAR is not going to get done until it becomes a 911, and we have to do it. So we'd end up doing only what we have to do. This allows us to take a whole package of energy-saving improvements and get something out of it, and pay for it, and not have the city borrow $15 million to get there.
And the city would have to pay because of the indirect costs, or anything over $150,000?
Exactly. So this stops us from going there, and I know that that's been a goal, as to how the committee, the school department, can help on the city side. And here's an opportunity for us to put those dollars to work. We gain by making those improvements to two of our more difficult buildings to get funding for, repair money, two buildings who need an awful lot of TLC. And while we're doing that, you know, saving money and putting the ESAR money to work what it was meant to do.
So what I was mentioning is, it says here, "Site review with Ken's team, Manny, Jessica, Kevin G."
They've already walked through the buildings. So that, the site review was, all of those people, including others, has walked with Amaresco to the buildings, walked through, looking at the rooftop units, looking at the equipment in the buildings, looking at the electrical systems, each and every time. Mike Keller here, who's here with, does all of that, you know, prewalk and prewalk through with our people, to be sure that what they think is going on in the buildings is actually going on. Taking an inventory of the equipment we have, the age of the equipment, the wear and tear on that equipment, and taking a look and see what kind of replacement equipment we can put in our buildings.
So these folks that were here, that are our people on the ground?
Yes.
They 100% agree with all of these projects, that this is the best way to go?
I think every one of those people agree with that. The two neediest buildings in the city, in our school department, are these two, and these improvements are going to get us to where we need to be in both of these buildings.
Yeah. I was, what I was asking, though, is what types? Like, for instance, the Talbot.
Yes.
We've talked about whether electric is good or not. I'm not an expert in that in any way.
So we're talking heat pumps now, because we know that we can't be guaranteed to get a gas service in that building, and the cost of doing a retrofit in that building with gas, because the building's electric right now, so it's piping. It's a boiler room that needs to be fabricated. It's a lot of work to change that building from what it is to what it would take in order to get that kind of system. So this is a heat pump system for Talbot that'll supply heating and air conditioning without all of that extra work. And the electrical system is sufficient in that building to be able to do a project like this. Henry Lord, on the other hand, is in a different position. Henry Lord has conventional boilers in it, which we just renewed. It has a cooling tower that needs to be replaced with a chiller. That work is going to happen as part of this project to bring that building to a point with heating and cooling. New rooftop units, windows at Henry Lord. All of those items are in this energy management system that'll fall under this project.
And whatever amount of money you have listed for Talbot isn't enough to do a conversion? There's been an analysis of that?
It wouldn't be. It wouldn't be. Right now, we don't have the, first of all, we don't have the ability to have the gas service in place before the Cinderella clause of the ESAR money times us out. So we need to make that decision now, and that decision is going to be more expensive, and we can come up with that analysis, but it is not the better way to go, because bringing the gas service in is not going to get us air conditioning. It's going to get us a heating system. What we want is heating and cooling.
Are there any deficiencies?
I'm sorry?
Are there any, like, problems with that, going to that heat pump system, is that?
It's not. It's probably the technology that we will be moving to in any building that doesn't have a full mechanical system.
And what does that leave us with? Was this already budgeted within the ESAR funds?
It was.
As this amount?
It's not, close to this amount. I think it was just a touch more than this, but close to this amount.
And this is ESAR 2, the one that's running out?
This is ESAR-
When the gentleman was talking about it running out, was that?
It's 2 and 3. I'm sorry. Kevin just said 2 and 3.
So it's combined?
Yeah.
Which runs out the end of this year?
24. September 24.
The end of 24?
Mm-hmm.
So we still have-
And this will be very close, because some of the lead times on some of this equipment are 40 weeks, 50 weeks. So the sooner we get started with the design work, and again, as Hal said, the fact that it's a one-stop shop helps us out a lot, because as the GC, so to speak, they can order that equipment now. So if you've got a 44-week wait and you order it now, as opposed to 10 weeks from now, by the time you do all the procurement to put everybody in place, that's 10 weeks we're adding on to the end of this thing. And we start getting dangerously close to not being able to meet our deadline of September 24, when the ESAR money times out.
The, in the budget for ESAR, it shows what is which, which one is which. We have a budget for 2 and 3?
Yeah, I think it does. Yeah, it's broken down. Yes.
And you had said the savings was $165,000, and then how did it get to the 3 million? At one point, there's something in here, I think, I read there was 3 million?
So that's escalated over the 20 years. Typically, we have a cost of inflation, which we use through the 25A DOER process. So that's through the cash flow, and that gives you the $3 million approximately.
And the money that the gentleman talked about, some other reimbursement, is coming from?
Yeah, so there's other incentives. So if you add the incentives and the energy savings, we're looking at probably closer to $3.5 million over that term that we're talking about. It's about $273,000 in projected incentives on this.
And that just comes in the form of, we don't have to pay the bill?
Yeah. So the way, the whole intent of this is, there's no borrowing on this. So when that money comes in, that'll either be bought down, or you can use that money to reallocate it, like the savings, for other things in other schools, educational. It's really up to the district on how you want to allocate those funds.
So you're saying in a year, we can count on $165,000 to spend on something?
Yes. We have our engineering team that has put that together, the analysis, and we'll be sure year after year that we're looking at that to validate that.
And if it didn't happen, that you guys?
Typically, we have, the way their guarantee structure works is we have to guarantee the savings, and we have a couple options. If we missed out savings, we have to make adjustments so that it does meet that. If, for some reason, we can't do that, then we typically write a check to make the difference. But it's in our best interest to make those repairs and adjustments, so we don't have to keep paying. But we will monitor that on a year after year basis.
Have you, for the five years, I think you said this is the sixth project or something, have you ever had to pay the city, or has it always worked out?
It always worked out.
So you never had to write a check to the city?
No, not, I haven't heard that. I mean, we write checks, like anybody else. We've been doing this for 22 years, but the whole idea is you want to be able to put your company behind, your guarantee, and that's what we're willing to do. If I could just jump in there one, because that's a good question. So we're talking about $165 today, with the rates today, with a modest, you know, escalator. But if the rates, electricity rates jump by 42% as predicted, then we can't guarantee a 42% hike. So if we're using 100 kilowatt hours, and after savings, we're supposed to use 75, and we're using 75, but the rate has gone through the roof, the dollars are not there. The savings is still there, as far as what we were doing. So you'd get hit with that no matter what. So 42% increase on the 100 is going to be a lot more than 42% on the 75. So we can guarantee the savings based on usage. We just can't guarantee the dollar savings, because we can't control that piece.
And when, would you be coming back to this committee on a yearly basis, whenever you do that analysis?
Yeah. So we can, the, what we're going to do is, we're going to keep the committee updated on where we are throughout the project, because it's such a large project and that kind of undertaking. I want the committee to know, if we order a rooftop unit and they tell us it's 32 weeks, you're going to know it's 32 weeks. We'll give you that analysis as to where it lands, and how we're going to work around that analysis. But we will also give you those yearly savings as they do their work each year, their audit, in order to be sure that they don't owe us money and that what they said is being delivered. So we will, you will see that, absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much. Are you?
Ms. Larve?
Yes. Just quickly. So we all know, this is a huge project, right? There's four schools. It's going to take a long time. So my question is, what if, you know, issues arise, and we have to go over the 15 million? What happens at that point? Or has that ever happened?
That's a very good question. So again, this whole project is open book, cost-plus. So we basically get our bids, we buy our material, and we share that with the city and the school department. And then we pick what material we're going to buy and what contractor we're going to pick to install it, assuming that they all came in with, you know, we have a schedule values that we first create, and then we seek to match our schedule values every step of the way. But, good point, if it goes over, then we have to either, we've got to figure something out. You know, either we've got to change our approach, or we've got to come up with some more money. So, I mean, for starters, the rebates that are coming from the utility company, that's like, that's free money. So- So we have in the past, like we did with the streetlights, when, when, that one, we got a three-quarters of a million dollar rebate, and when the rebate came in, we used that rebate money to, to provide additional work scope to the city at that, at that point.
Right, so we wouldn't have to go back and ask for more ESSER money? I mean, it, we're not even sure that there'd be ESSER money available, correct?
Right, I don't know if you could ask for extra money.
All right, so we'd have to adjust with the cost-saving money that you said would go back into the district?
Well, that's, that's, that's energy savings money.
Right.
And that, and again, the good news about this project is, unlike almost every other project we do, the guaranteed savings number is what pays back the loan, but here, there's no loan, so that, that guaranteed savings number, not that it doesn't matter much, but it's, the bank is not looking for that number. You know, that, that number, and like Ken said too, the, once utility rates go up, that number's gonna be even bigger. Right now, we figure utility rates go up on average of 3% a year, but chances are they're gonna go up a lot more in the next few years. So that just takes that 165,000, it makes it a much, much bigger number. And as Ken mentioned too, if you didn't do the project whatsoever, now, when you get an increase in rates, now you get even more of a hit, now you're really, now you're really in trouble.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Sorry, I just had one question. At the beginning, you were talking about 25A, B, whatever it was. So was this project not bid? Or was it just, can you just explain how you got it? How you?
Absolutely, right. So it's, it's not bid on a, it's through an RFP process. So it's not a low bid plan and spec kind of a, a bid. It's, it's, it's an RFP, and within the RFP, there's a, for lack of a better word, a table that, that all the energy service companies have to bid on. They're gonna say, well, how much do you charge to do engineering? How much do you charge to do construction management? How much do you charge to be a general contractor? How much do you charge for profit? And we fill out that whole table, and then we put that in our proposal in response to the RFP.
So maybe this is a, Mr. Patrico question, but did anybody else answer the RFP? Like, how did we get to the point of?
So there were quite a few companies that answered the RFP. It wasn't, it wasn't a four of a school department RFP. This was a city RFP looking for an energy management corporation. Amaresco's been with the city since 2008, without any interruption. But after a certain amount of time, we chose to go out to bid again. And Amaresco won the bid the second time, based on their numbers and their performance. So that, this contract is technically, so that the bid process, which is through the Designer Selection Board, RFQ, for qualifications, along with their package, their, their price proposal and their non-price proposal, they came out as, as the winner of that proposal. The 25A allows Amaresco to bid the entire project now. And basically, they come to us with that open book. They put, put the boilers out to bid, if there were boilers on this project. They put them out to bid. They say, here's Company A, Company B, Company C. These are the installers of those boilers. Which one do you want? There's a local in the middle. Do you want the local? Are you willing to pay an extra $40,000 to keep the, the work local? And that process happens through the whole project, so to speak. Every single thing gets bid out. It's not that it doesn't get bid, it just doesn't go through the formal 30B process, which is the time-consuming piece of advertising, putting it out to bid, having it out to bid, collecting the bids, and awarding. That's about a five to seven week process, depending on how you do it. That's totally eliminated. They get the prices, they're written, then they're legitimate prices from companies with the entire scope, as they, as they have listed it, and that scope is, is what we've asked for, so to speak. When they get that price, that goes into the ledger, and we slowly but surely build the entire project with real companies. So this is, this is estimates, this is their work that they do every day. So they fill that, this current number with those prices that they have, and then in turn, that will eventually turn into hard numbers from different companies, and then we move the project forward. And just to go backwards, just a tiny step from Ms. Larrabee, if the project comes over, we would do what we do on any other project. As Hal said, we may have some money sitting aside, some kind of contingency, but we'd also do value engineering. So we take a look at that and say, how can we change this scope if it's way out of whack? How do we change this scope to make it fall into place? And that work happens all the time, on every construction project, no matter how big or small. There's always room for us to negotiate something with someone to get, to keep those prices in line.
So the, that was an answer to my question. Was this particular, all these four schools, everything here, it hasn't been bid yet by anybody to say, we chose Amaresco over somebody else? So their 20%, I think it was 20% profit, is gonna come on the whole product, whatever those results are? And you just get 20% of that, basically?
Yeah, 12% for overhead and, and 8% for profit. And just, if I could, may, just skip back one step, because Ken brought something up that jogged my memory. The good news too about Amaresco being the general contractor, and again, I think unlike the filed subbids, where, you know, contractors really don't talk, we, we prepurchase, and that's another thing in terms of the time schedule, we prepurchase all large equipment, so we don't leave that up to our subcontractors. So, so you'll, you'll save on a, sort of a double markup, if you will.
And when was the contract that you had with the city? The, Mr. Patrico said it went back out, so you're good now for how long?
Yeah, well, it went back out in 2019. So there's, be honest with you, Mr. Agia, there's not a lot of guidance from the AG's office, or the Inspector General's office for that matter, in terms of what, for chapter 25A, what, what the length of procurement time is. The city just decided to kinda play it safe, and, 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 our initial contract was in 2008, so, or the procurement was in 2008. And so we went probably another seven years before the RFP was renewed or rewritten for-
Yeah, no, I understand. I saw, I was, I was just asking to see what it, how it worked, that you became part of this, because your name has been in the city for a long time, and I've heard it for different things, so I was just curious why?
Yeah.
How do we get it? And if somebody else comes to us and says, well, why didn't I get a chance to bid on that 15 million? Now we have an answer, because-
Oh, sure.
You asked. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to refer this to the full committee.
Motion to refer.
Get a second?
Second.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, I also want to announce that Bobby Bailey recently joins the meeting on, on Zoom. We'll take about a one-minute recess and go to the full meeting. Oh, motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion made.
Second.
Deb, call the roll, please. Slipping already.
Mr. Agia?
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I'd like to call to order the Monday, December 12th, regular meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yeah.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah.
Ms. Roderick?
Yeah.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Mr. Bailey and Ms. Roderick are joining us by Zoom. Salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of people for citizens input. Nelson Vasquez, Sunset Hill, Fall River. Oh, I'm sorry. Nelson, give me a minute, buddy. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
Yes. So, wake up this morning, there's a motion before you. I'm against it. I don't think it should follow through, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of families out there that work second shifts and don't have the opportunity to participate in citizens input at this time, because they work a second shift. So, you know, to me, that, that's just not how everything's supposed to be. If we're gonna set a message, it should be that everyone should have the opportunity, whether we disagree or, agree or disagree, that's the whole purpose of citizens input. We want as much participation in that as much as possible. But instead of putting all this effort into removing a segment of citizens input, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has come out with their new statistics on our student population's performance. And I have to be honest with you, it's troubling, and it's unacceptable. For English and mathematics, grades three through eight, partially meeting expectations. For science and technology in English, grades five through eight, five and eight, partially meeting expectations. English and math, grades 10, partially meeting expectations. And then finally, for the same thing, science and technology in English, grade 10, partially meeting expectations. We have this enormous budget for our school department. So much funding has come down like we've never seen before, let alone the high school phase. If our students can't learn these basic skills in grades three through eight in math and English, how are they going to succeed in high school? If they don't have the, that type of education, we're failing them. This is unacceptable. Yes, I know there are certain factors that factor in with students with disabilities, and other things playing around in the background. But at the end of the day, these test scores, they, they get put into a system all around the country, and every state is, is factored in. And when you look at these numbers, I mean, it's just, things need to change. So instead of wanting to remove a segment of citizens input, because, you know, with all due respect, he doesn't like anyone who disagrees with him, this is where the focus needs to be, right here. Let's improve these scores, so that the state doesn't take us over to do what this school department's failing to do. And that is to educate our children, so that they can be successful. That would, that, that needs to be the focus. Not this, not these games of just wanting to silence people, because he doesn't like what, what, what they say was, they disagree with him politically. This needs to be folk, this, this needs to be the focus. Because if we've, if we're failing them now, they will be on a street corner, and they will be in a jail cell, and their futures will be gone, given the violence that's taken over in, in our city. This needs to be the focus, right here, these, these, these scores, before the state takes action. And that would be a very consequential picture for our city. Thank you.
Colin Dias, Ray Street.
Thank you, members of the school committee, and Mr. Vasquez, great citizens input. Very quickly on the JRC, I hold the position, we should not send any city money to that organization. We should instead send a message, and not fulfill that contractual obligation. We should vote no. That is a good moral message, we could send to the community, that this city condemns torture in organizations that engage in torture. Clear as day. And what, and listen to the last school committee meeting, what assurances do we have that another student won't be sent to that organization? And seeing that individuals can sign contracts, and then the school committee votes to fund them later, and then they're basically, aren't basically tied behind their, right behind them, that they have to fund these contracts? I think we should amend the policies to make sure that we never put the cart before the horse, before anything like that ever again. And I also learned before the school committee today, and I'm gonna call a spade a spade, there is a proposed change to the citizens input rules. A proposed change that is nothing but a Paul Coogan plot to suppress freedom of speech. The mayor, I guess, and I just learnt about this Sunday, I guess the mayor wants to pull a fast one on the community, to suppress dialogue of any opinion contrary to his. And we should make it easier for the public to participate in the, in the process, in public meetings, not harder. That is the democratic thing to do. We should encourage the public to participate in school committee meetings, or any meeting within the city of Fall River, and to give their input on matters, not make it more difficult. The mayor is clearly taking advantage of the charter, where you have to review citizens' input rules every year. This is just another example of the mayor following the charter only when it benefits him. Written input submitted to these school committee meetings are a great tool for one parent of our community, those who lack transportation, those who work second, third shift, and those who work full-time to make ends meet. Things that this mayor wouldn't understand, because he is so out of touch with everyday residents of this community. This proposal, in my opinion, is politically motivated. And we see this happen time after time again. When you oppose this mayor, or anything he supports in any way, the kind, Mr. Friendly attitude goes into hibernation. We've seen the mayor resort to name-calling, political attacks, elitist behavior. He's told his opponents to jump in the Tottenham River. He ridiculed his opponents, one sitting right here, telling them to go buy a house. Just this Thanksgiving, he called out his political opponents, saying they're social, whatever he said. I think there's something wrong when you resort to dirty politics on Thanksgiving of all days. It's deranged behavior. I think the proposed amendment to citizens input is just another dirty trick, the silent speech that those in power do not agree with, and I ask the school committee to vote it down. Thank you.
I guess the next ones are read by you, Deb. Robert Camara, Canyon Street, Fall River.
Dear school committee members, as a Derfie graduate, the father of two Derfie graduates, and the grandfather of a recent Derfie graduate, I want to express my opinion on the proposed elimination of written citizens input. How can you, as an elected body sworn up to, sworn to uphold both the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' respective constitution, be considering an action that would limit the people's right to communicate their opinions, feelings, and positions on school issues? feelings, and positions on school issues? Part of the first Article V of our Commonwealth's Constitution clearly states as follows: "All power residing originally in the people and being derived from them, the several magistrates and officers of government vested with authority, whether legislative, executive, or judicial, are their substitutes and agents and are all times accountable to them." How can you, as our substitutes and agents at all times, entertain a motion to eliminate any form of communication that can allow the will of the people to be heard? After all, you were elected to serve the people, not the school system. You were elected to be our voice, our watchdogs, so to speak. So, I ask simply, don't you want, shouldn't you want, as much input as possible before you make decisions that impact the people you are elected to represent? I would think so. In closing, I would use the profound words of our forefathers to remind us all why this proposal should not be supported. Governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the constant of the governed. Should you not allow every possible method available to determine the will and thereby the constant of the people you represent? I would think so. Respectfully, Robert Camara, 127 Canyon Street, Far River.
Next is Jeff Gudrow, Palmer Street, Far River.
Good afternoon. School Committee Board, since this is the last month of the new year, I hope everyone has a great Christmas and a happy holiday. I see on today's agenda the mayor's trying to pull by proposing to remove written citizens' input from the rules of the school committee. This is the 21st century. The old time thinking of making people have to come before the school committee to give their input is antiquated. I do not have always adequate, I'm sorry, adequate transportation to come to this meetings. I often work during the day or night changing the rules. How is he proposing affects people like me? I love giving my input on school committee matters, the same way I would give to, give you my input on city council issues. I believe the mayor wants to make this change too, so I personally feel he's doing this intentionally. In my opinion, he wants to change the rules. The rule change is politically motivated. The city councils should adjust their rules to match the school committees, not the other way around. If we, the citizens who submit inputs, said things the mayor agreed with 100% of the time, he wouldn't want to get rid of the written input. No doubt in my mind, we should make it easier for city residents to be involved in government affairs, not harder. Let's respect and honor the right to freedom of speech, and let's cherish it. What the mayor is proposing is not democratic. Like I said, we have those who work second shift, cannot make it to these meetings, and parents. This proposal is elitist and too politically motivated to stop the mayor's opponents. Please do the right thing, and let's put this aside. Thank you. Jeff Gudrow, 229 Palmer Street.
Next, CJ Ferry, Buffington Street, Far River.
Members of the school committee, it has been brought to my attention that the Far River School Committee wants to restrict written citizens' input. The written citizens' input was the result of a Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination complaint filed against the city of Far River. The city was represented by Joe Macy and Gary Howiak. The complaint resulted in a mutual agreement that citizens' input would be allowed for a public body meeting to accommodate those with physical, emotional, or other disabilities. While the chairman of your school, of your committee, may feel that it is the right of the school committee to center the voices of the people, a decision to restrict citizens' input will result in another complaint with the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination. I hope that this committee will see through this attempt to deny the people, deny the people the right to be heard. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. CJ Ferry.
Next up is Melissa Machado, Bay Street, Far River.
Good evening. I am going to make every effort to attend the meeting in person. Unfortunately, this is a very busy time for me professionally, so I am not sure that will be possible. In regards to the issue of the Judge Rottenberg Center, I did submit my input on the topic during the prior meeting where it was discussed. Since the topic has come up, I have done some research. The institution is for people with developmental disabilities, emotional disorders, and autistic-like behaviors. Using aversive punishment to actually cause pain to a human being to stop behaviors, some as benign as not wanting to take one's coat off, this facility utilizes an electric shock device called Graduated Electronic Decelerator. This device is attached to a student's body. Using a remote control, one can give an electric shock to said patient. According to the autisticadvocacy.org, people have been shocked for flapping their hands, a common tendency for those on the spectrum, when they are overstimulated or even just excited. Standing up, not taking off a coat, involuntary noises or movement, or even screaming in pain from a prior shock. GEDs can cause burns to skin and make someone unable to move. It can scar people to the point where they can get mental health disabilities from them. JRC is the only place in the country that uses these devices. The same person in one of these facilities in another location is treated without avversives, especially with GEDs. The FDA banned these devices in 2020. JRC in turn sued them to be able to continue using these devices. This treatment is inhumane and unacceptable. Autism and being on the spectrum is not a choice. I have loved ones on the spectrum, and today I am speaking for them and for any of the people unfortunate enough to land at JRC. I oppose this treatment, this facility, and the city using my money to pay for the torture and punishment of people who need help, not punishment. I implore the committee to speak, to seek any means necessary to see that no child from this city is sent there. Listening to someone speak last night, last meeting, I'm sorry, she said, "Resources were an issue, and time scrambling to find someone, a placement is difficult." While I do not envy anyone in the position to make such decisions, I for one would prefer to pay OT for people to work to find these children placement, to be able to be treated and able to thrive, instead of just accepting cruel punishment because there are no other options. I ask that you deny any placements to JRC and remove this child as soon as humanly possible so that he or she is not subject to even more trauma at their hands. One last note, I understand that Mayor Coogan wants to eliminate the opportunity for citizens to send in written citizens' input for these meetings. This is not a monarchy, this is a democracy. A professional should not have their feedback unheard due to not being able to be physically present. I hope that the committee denies this request and encourages citizens to be active in local government. Thank you for your time. Melissa Machado, 1025 Bay Street.
Melanie Rondon, Lincoln Avenue, Far River.
Good evening. My opposition to the placement of any child in the Judge Rottenberg Center is clearly echoed by the community in general and by members of this committee. As such, I don't feel it's necessary to reiterate the many issues surrounding this institution. However, the responsibility of this committee, despite any moral objections this body may have as a whole or in part by individual members, is to uphold contractual obligations as required by the law and protect the district from incurring any additional costs via litigation for failing to abide by the terms of any contract. It is financially irresponsible to withhold payment to any vendor intentionally. I would argue a key function of this body is to impartially uphold contracts, and especially to ensure the district incurs no additional expenses for failing to carry out this duty. That being said, it is time to examine why this facility is the only option for placement of students with needs of this degree. This population is clearly the most vulnerable in our community and deserve the highest level of care delivered by competent and compassionate professionals. The Judge Rottenberg Center does not deliver the care we rightly expect for our highest need individuals. It is time for all members of our community opposed to this torturous techniques of the Judge Rottenberg Center to demand better care and treatment than that institution provides. There is no cure for this facility, and its abuse of the population solely serves. It's an outrage that this is the only option for this type of treatment. Massachusetts is well-known for outstanding health care. Let us come together and demand this outstanding health care be provided to every citizen of the Commonwealth, especially those with disabilities. As long as there is no alternative, the Judge Rottenberg Center will continue to exist. Far River School Committee withholding payment will not affect the Judge Rottenberg Center. It's likely to cause additional and unnecessary expenditures to Far River. Most of all, it's not a solution. Let's turn this attention and momentum into finding an actual solution. Melanie Rondro, 71 Lincoln Ave.
Thank you, Deb. Tonight, we have no recognition awards, we have no subcommittee updates. Number five, superintendent's report. Superintendent Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first, a hiring update. As of November 1st, we have hired 10 teachers, two administrators, 16 pairs, eight ESNons, four custodians, 11 cafeteria workers, and five subs, with a total of 56 new hires for the month, which is very good. However, on the other side of that, we have lost 11 teachers, we have lost two pairs, one custodian, one Coda, one cafeteria worker, and one nurse, for a total of 17 staff that we have lost. We also have an update for the Holiday Fundraising Committee. On Thursday, November 10th, the Holiday Wish Committee hosted its annual fundraiser to support Fall River Public Schools. The event was organized by Cindy Kudo and Claudia Costa, Cindy's from The Pace. Our schools and departments donated themed baskets, which were raffled off and raised considerable amount of money. Also, local businesses stepped up in a huge way and donated funds towards the event. In all, between ticket sales and donations, approximately $17,000, you heard that right, $17,000 was raised and turned back to our children. Every school has identified students who would benefit from this worthy cause. Gifts are in the process of being purchased and will be distributed to families in time for the holidays. We are grateful to Ms. Kudo, Ms. Costa, and every single person who donated or took part in this very worthy cause. We currently know that their generosity will brighten some spirit, many, many spirits this holiday season. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Excellent. Ms. Kudo, any questions or comments? Ms. Dragia?
Just a comment on the hiring. Like, I hear what you're saying about, we hire a lot, but when I look at the list of jobs that are open, it's a daunting task for anybody to fill these positions, but I just don't, I don't know what we can do about it, but that list gets, you know, one day last week, I think, there was almost 30 jobs posted to the same day. I don't know if that's just, are they reposting to get them quicker or something, but it just seems like it's unbelievable how many job openings that we have. But with that said, I'd be remiss if one of them just sticks in my side, that back in March or April, we made a motion to pass a laborer's position in the maintenance department. And you know this has been an issue for me for many, many months, and it still hasn't happened. And I just, when I see all these openings and I see people, some of them you need to be qualified for, this and that, and we can't find somebody, but when I see that we can't hire a laborer in six months, to me, it's just something that doesn't sit well. So, whatever you can do to get that rectified, I know we did also pass a rule to put people in, like a student or, you know, younger people as a tryout, to make them at least minimum wage, see how they go. I think that's a way to get some people in as a trial basis in certain positions, but whatever you can do for that, I'd appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Okay. Thank you. We have two sets of minutes that need approval tonight. 7:01 is an instructional subcommittee meeting, and 7.2 is approval of the regular school committee meeting from 11:14. The instructional subcommittee is from 11:07. Can I get a motion to approve both?
Motion approved.
Second. Deb, could you call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Johar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of travel requests.
Motion to approve travel requests.
Any discussion, I have a motion.
Second. Mrs. Roderick, second.
Mrs. Roderick seconded it. Any discussion on travel? Mr. Dragia?
Another one that just, the first one about going to Mount Hope for a wrestling meet. I think we should look at some of our policies. This is just a high school that just, they drive over to, like, it just seems to me to be a waste. Almost every meeting now, we come up with something that's a waste, and I think that would be one. I don't know if that's a policy change, or is that just a superintendent? But I for one think that if the high school needs to schedule a meet in Rhode Island, then schedule the meet, and why would we need that? But that's just my opinion. However, that could go.
I agree.
With that, I yield.
Is that just a simple policy change?
So, that's what, we actually have had that internal conversation, because that's come up. There was an opportunity for kids to go to Rhode Island, for instance, to do a scrimmage, and if they're not, if that doesn't come in between meetings, then that's not an option. But because it's in the policy, I think that we have to amend the policy. So, we were, we wanted to bring it either to the policy subcommittee, or have this committee create some sort of radius so that students would be, we would be able to bring them. I mean, we can bring them to Springfield, two hours away, without coming to committee, but we can't bring them to Tivon.
Why don't we just bring them to, why don't we just include Rhode Island, Massachusetts and Rhode Island? Because that's most of them, Connecticut is, we can approve that.
Okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we include Rhode Island and Massachusetts for the team travel.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion, Mr. Hunt?
Just real quickly, that's fine, Rhode Island as well, but, I mean, when it goes beyond Rhode Island, like New England, is there any difference between us going to Rhode Island and us going to Connecticut or New Hampshire or?
Well, we would have to, anywhere else, we'd have to bring it through travel.
No, I understand that. Right, right, okay. But we're just gonna, for now, we're gonna include Rhode Island. That's fine, I'm just thinking ahead of it a little bit.
I think the overnight is also, the further away you go, the overnight becomes like a different vote.
They're up in Maine, it's overnight.
Well, it doesn't have to be overnight. I mean, I've played at SMU, we've gone to Maine in one day and back. But it's no big deal. I'm fine with Rhode Island, that's fine.
Deb, you want to call the roll on that change?
Makes more sense just to stay.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Johar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yeah.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Acceptance of donations.
We need a roll call on the travel requests.
I thought we just did that.
That was too clear.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Could I get a roll call?
Motion to approve travel.
A motion in a second. I have a motion in a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Johar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yeah.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. I have a few donations here tonight. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to accept.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on donations? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Johar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yeah.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Contracts. We have a number of, oh, I'm sorry. Boy, am I hard. Go ahead, Maria.
Okay, donations. From Stop &amp; Shop, supermarket company, to Fall River Public Schools, we accept the amount of $1,440, and that was to cover costs for our students and families that attended a game in June at Fenway Park. We just received the check, which is why it's on today. Also, from St. Anthony of the Desert. Also, from St. Anthony of the Desert Church to Watson Elementary School, on behalf of Principal Hoag, she accepts 30 frozen turkeys and 30 boxes of side dishes that were donated to her families. And from Home Depot to Green Elementary School, on behalf of Dr. Dunn, a donation of a Christmas tree. From Walmart in Fayhaven to Green Elementary School, on behalf of Dr. Dunn, 200 sugar cookies donated to Green School. And from United Methodist Church, Green Element, to Green Elementary School, from Doc Dunn, on behalf of Doc Dunn, she accepts four Thanksgiving dinners that were donated to Green families. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Superintendent. Number, item 10 is an approval of contracts. We have a number of them in front of us, and as we usually do, if someone has one they want to pull out, I think we should pull them out, and if anybody has any suggestions, I'm listening.
Number one and two?
Okay, thank you. One and two? Anything further?
The government connection down? I don't know what number it is.
Under miscellaneous?
What, is that on the first page?
First page.
Second page?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anything further?
And I'm sure we're gonna pull the Judge Rottenberg, both of those.
Yeah. I'm trying to say that over here. I'm not sure if anyone can hear me.
Yep, that's on the second page.
She is, she is.
Okay, so I got the Judge Rottenberg Center on the second page. Anything on the second page? Okay, so can we get a motion in a second to approve the other contracts?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick's?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have four holds. Item one is Evolved Technologies. Mr. Agia?
I just was curious if it's being used daily, if there's any issues, and if, even if you can't say it now, if you get us something in writing that gives us an update, but that's all.
I will say that it's being used daily, absolutely, but we will get you an updated thing in the Friday email.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick's?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next is ENE Systems. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I just had a question on this. I read through the documentation, and it seems like the cost has gone up tremendously over the five years. But my question is about, do we just pay them a blanket and they are responsible for the work, or does it, is it, you know, you fix it, X amount of dollars an hour, so there'd be money left over out of this 465?
It's a fixed, it's a fixed monthly bill. So, part of this contract is the employees that come with it, so the two ENE technicians, union fitters, and they perform work here every single day, so they are here. Every day the school is in session, they're here on vacation weeks, and they're here in the summer. And they're doing PM work on equipment that they are, that's part of the contract. So we attach the list of equipment that ENE does take care of. It's not at every building, but it's, it's large equipment, quite a bit of it is out-of-date equipment, and that is all part of their contract. So there's, there's two employees that are part of this particular piece.
That are here 40 hours a week?
Yes, or more.
And when I see it on the bid here, it's broken up to holidays, weekends, like, is that just a guess, that we're paying them?
So what, what happens is the, there may be work that is not part of the contract. So we ask, when we put out the RFP, to have an idea of what it's costing us if I call them on a Sunday morning because a boiler went down. It's one of the boilers that they may or may not be working on, and it also may be a situation where I need action because school is going to be in session on Monday morning, and I don't have a backup boiler, so to speak. So the hourly wage is not necessarily something that we constantly use, but I need a number because contractually, it's all part of the contract. So if I have them come in to do that extra work, I'm not going out to bid to try to get that work done on an emergency waiver from D-CAM.
So when I go through this list of what you have here for each school?
Yes.
We don't have anybody that can do any of this work?
We have some of, not this work, but I do, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff here that's not listed, that our people are doing, our one person is doing, and every once in a while, a plumber will jump into that mix. But we only have one HVAC person, and this work is not in their wheelhouse, not because of any reason other than the fact that this is large work, and we are responsible for, we are taking responsibility for some of the smaller work in the other buildings, some of the newer equipment, that the, I don't want to just say filters, but filters, lube, cleaning out the coils, that work is being done by our mechanic, our HVAC mechanic.
Yeah, believe me, I'm not an expert on any of this stuff, but when I look at what we're spending, it seems like a lot of money for...
I would love to have three or four HVAC mechanics. They're not to be had. I'd love to have an, I'd love to be able to fill the plumbing ranks.
So if we were able to do that, we're locked into this five-year contract, is...
We're locked into the contract for a variety of reasons. As I said, some of this work is large piping. We wouldn't do it in-house. The capacity is not there on our side. The equipment, the scaffolding, so to speak, everything involved in some of these projects are beyond our capabilities. We need a company that does just that kind of work. It's their wheelhouse. So ENE's been here for a long time, not just because we didn't have personnel to do it, but because some of this work is specialty work. So as we strengthen the maintenance department, slowly but surely, we may be, the next time this contract rolls around in four and a half years, we may be able to pull some of this work away. We may pull some of this work away with, with the change in this contract at some point, swapping out something else that comes along. For instance, the new stuff that Amoresco is putting in may fall into the realm of a little too big, a little too intricate for our side, and we'll swap it out for something else.
But if we were able to do the, so let's just suppose we got people that can do the work.
We would take away some, yeah, we would take away some of the PM work that ENE's doing.
And then how does it get compensated, is what I'm saying.
Well, as I said, we would, right now, I don't have the capacity, so what, what we've contracted for is what we'll pay. However, if we get to a point where we may have some technicians who are capable of doing some of this work, then we would sit down with ENE. We have a long contract, a long-time relationship with ENE, and our contract is for the next four and a half years. We would sit down with them and see if we can renegotiate some of the items, pull some items, add some items. Whether we come even and I get other work taken care of, my only concern is to be sure that, you know, all of these systems are up and running. That, that'll be between, you know, Mr. Monis and myself to take a look at our capabilities in-house, and wherever we can make that work, we'll make that work.
So we get two, two people full-time, and then there's other costs, there must be other costs.
So the two people full-time, is their wage? Some of that material is, is part of the project, some of it isn't, so we do pay a material fee that's built into this also. And then we also have the oversight of the, the operating system, so that is maintained by them.
Yeah, when you said the two people, and you'd put that in writing, the way my mind goes is two people, $600,000, that means they get $300,000 apiece. And I'm thinking to myself, we could, if we were going to pay that kind of money, we probably could get somebody. We're paying people $50,000. We paid the director $75,000. Like, if we paid the real money, could we spend the $600,000? But then this escalates up to over $1 million in the last two years that we are automatically paying. And I'm saying, why can't we do this, some of this, or at least swap it?
And, and we have, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say to you that, that we have done quite a bit of work. We were on a roll to do more work, except we just can't fill that second position right now with a person who has the ability to do this kind of work. It's a tough, it's a tough market, because HVAC people are getting great money everywhere they go. And these are union contractors who are working on this building because we are paying prevailing wage. So anybody who comes to work from the outside will be paid prevailing wage. We don't pay prevailing wage within the district, but we, we do have to pay prevailing wage for all those who come and work in the district.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying. You're absolutely right. If, if we paid an HVAC mechanic $100,000 a year, we may have more offers than we currently are getting, more people applying. That's a, that's a big ask for a union to accept two or three members in the union making that kind of money.
Yeah, I just think the more we discuss it, the more we look at it, the reality is we're paying somebody else rather than paying our own employees who could do the work in-house. I don't think we pay the people that are talented and doing it enough, but they're never going to get paid enough if we take the work that they would get paid that much money and give it to somebody else. That's, that's sort of my feeling on it, and I'm not opposed to it. I know they've been here for a long time, but it just bothers me that sometimes I don't think we're holding our own people to high enough standards where then we could get some of this stuff done. So I personally have high expectations. I think Mr. Monis is doing a great job, and he can do some of this stuff, or, you know, with his skill set and recruiting, but if we lock people in, we're kind of like, we'll wait five years, maybe we'll hire you. So I'm going to vote for this, but I also think it's something that we should look really hard at.
Sure.
Motion approved.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion is second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick's?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item held is under miscellaneous government connections, Inc., 10,000 headphones district-wide. Mr. Cabral?
What's the question?
What are they?
Oh, so this is just a yearly revamp on headphones over COVID. Many of them broke. Up until this point, we've not been able to procure that number, so we've been buying onesie-twosies here and there, but with MCAS and testing season coming up, we're just being prepared.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, the number just strikes me as 10,000. That's, that's a lot of headphones, and I'm just curious of the use, the need for it, like, what do we currently have? Why, what are they using it for now? And, you know, how many kids, and you said MCAS, I mean, how many kids on MCAS need headphones?
So before COVID, every student had a pair of headphones, and we're starting to dwindle down on that number, because up until this point, I can't procure that type of number. Ideally, they're $1.75 apiece, they should be replaced every year. The other option is to pay upwards of $27 apiece, and with breakage, right now, we've been, as a central staff, we've discussed it, we've gone back and forth, it's just easier right now to replace the headphones. Most of the buildings do an excellent job of policing the headphones and putting them in bags for the individual students. This will also allow headphones at the high school level. In the past, we've done earbuds, and it just, it doesn't work.
I, I guess I'm just missing what the need is instructionally for students to use headphones year, like, over and over. I just, we only have 10,000 students, so 11,000 students.
Right, but if they're using, we have lots of platforms. If they're on a computer, whether they're in kindergarten or fifth grade or 10th grade, they're using headphones so that they're listening to whatever. So they might be at a station, we're assigning the headphones to the individual students, so they're, it is, they are, I mean, technology's being widely used across the district, so we want to make sure that we have headphones for every student.
So it's our responsibility to get headphones for every student?
Well, it was our responsibility to give every student a Chromebook.
But, so I'm saying, nobody brings their own, like, we just need this many?
Some, some of the middle and high school students use their own, but I just have to be prepared, because at a moment's notice, a building can call and say, hey, listen, we need 30 more headphones, I need 200 more headphones for testing. Some buildings create testing kits where they have them in the bags, and they use them just for MCAS, so the kids don't bring their headphones. Most of them are used center-based learning in the schools so that the kids have their, their headphones in their bag. When they go to their Chromebook and they're working, they have their own headphones.
And what's the policy on breakage? We got to replace them?
Yeah, we've been replacing to this point. We've kind of chalked it up as a pencil or pen at this point, but I mean, if we want to look at something long-term and go with a, a more robust headphone type, then we would look at people being held responsible for something that much more expensive.
Or we're going to have to spend $18,000 a year on headphones.
So the last time we did this was two and a half years ago, and I've been just kind of yearly sneaking in 500 to 1,000 and replacing the, the most damaged ones. This time now, we have to replace the fleet because the buildings are all saying their headphones are ready to go.
Yeah, I think we should look at something. Motion approved.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What are these questions, what are these questions? What do these headphones look like? Are they Bluetooth or they plug-in?
No, they're plug-in.
Okay. So personally, I would prefer our students using the headphones we supply them than Bluetooth headphones they're getting from home, and they can sit there and listen to music or do whatever. So I do think that it's important that they're using ours, and I do think it's our responsibility to provide them. So if, there's still a motion to approve, I'll second that.
I got a motion is second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick's?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The other hold was on two, two bills from the Judge Rottenberg Center. I, I'd ask Laurie Oberchain and Kristin Faris come down, who made the site business visit to give us an update on what goes on up there, if you would, to be so kind. to give us an update on what goes on up there, if you would be so kind. Thank you.
So we took a team from Fall River up to the Judge Rothenberg Center. We wanted specifically to ask them questions that you had posed previously to Kristin about their use of adversive therapy, specifically the GED. We also wanted to tour the facility to see what that was like and speak to the people on the ground to hear the process they have to go through, the type of education the director provides over there, as well as the clinical supervision that's, the oversight that's done at the center. They were super welcoming. We got to see many different classrooms. They answered our hard questions. And I think in the summary that we provided you, there is, we explained the process that they would have to go through in order to utilize the GED. It's important to know, though, they do not utilize that form of treatment on any children under the age of 22. Although the facility is able to do so, they can only do so if they have first assigned an accepted IEP that specifically lists the GED as a service or an accommodation in there. So that would have to start with the LEA, which is us, in order to even begin that process to move forward. If a school district was to do that, then they still have many other steps to go through, which includes their own Human Rights Committee review, as well as probate court where students are given an independent attorney to represent them during that time. The whole process would take six to nine months. But again, it would have to start with us. And I don't think that we would ever want to move forward with that type of treatment with our students. But other than that, we saw some of the same things we see in our own classrooms. We saw schedules, routines, positive reinforcement. We saw students engaged in instruction on computers or in a weight room. We saw the staff interacting with kids, the kids interacting with the staff. Again, we get to see the positive reinforcement that they utilize, their school store, their movie theater, their game room. They were really receptive to us and welcoming any type of questions that we had. Did I leave anything out, Kristin?
Nope, I don't think so.
So I do have something. So to be clear, any student from Fall River that went to this facility, before they could use any of these practices that some of these people have described as torture or electric shock, they have to get a judge's order with the school initiating the request to perform it.
Yes.
So there's nobody up there unilaterally deciding anything?
No.
Without the help of, I'm assuming, the school, the guardians, and a judge?
Yes, the IEP team starts, and that includes the child's guardian.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Ms. Larvee?
So that leads me, hi.
Hi.
So that leads me, so our system has a say, right? We have, our district has a say because of the IEP situation. So you said, the signed IEP with GED listing. So how do we, as a district, ensure that we're not, in the future, going to sign off on something like that? Does that have to be in our policy? Does that have to be, because I will never want any, I mean, I don't support GED. I don't want anybody going to this facility if they're going to be getting that sort of service, okay? So how do we ensure, as a district, that we have the ability to say no?
That would fall on myself and my team as your leaders in the district to, for me to educate the supervisors that that should never be signed off on because the supervisors in Fall River are the ones that sign off on the IEPs to make sure that they're ready to go out. So it would be education on our end, and I would not want a supervisor working under me that would unilaterally make that decision without consulting myself, so.
Okay, and we can never be overruled by DCF or the courts or, so if we ultimately do not sign off on this, it doesn't happen?
On the IEP itself.
On the IEP.
Yes. Thank you, IEP itself.
Anything further?
So in the phone side?
Sorry, I can't see you. I'm trying to tell Paul.
Shouldn't have a laptop.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Pereira?
I know. Um, oh, so, thank you for touring the school, for taking your time to do that. I kind of voted to table it and let that happen because I felt like colleagues up here wanted it. To me, what were you going to say? The bad stuff? Probably not, right? They knew you were coming. They showed you everything that was good. And I'm sure the facility is beautiful, but I, you could live in a million-dollar house, but if parents are beating their kids, that house isn't so beautiful, right? So I'm glad they have a movie theater and all that stuff, and I'm glad they have, you know, schedules up, and it seems to be, educationally, they're being proactive. But I didn't expect any difference. Now, in that, you had made, it was a statement, and I believe it was, we got an email, I believe it was like at the end, and there was something, maybe somebody else remembers it, but it was in quotes. And it said something regarding DCF, as far as placement went, that if DCF places a child, it is not contingent on their signing of contract. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So with that being said, let's say Ms. Dlosh never signed the contract, and DCF wanted to place that child there, where would that child be right now?
There.
Okay. So this really doesn't have anything to do, in this case, because this isn't a parent, this is DCF, which is a guardian, and certainly knows more about this child than I do, than many of us do. So regardless, if Ms., and I think that's important to know, that regardless if Ms. Dlosh signed that contract or not, this child is in the care and custody of the state, and DCF trumps us.
Correct. So in addition to the visit, I was asked to get legal guidance on our ability to withhold paying this contract. That was guidance from our attorney with the language that you're referring to comes directly from the regulations, that it is because he is placed residentially through DCF, we do not have a say in that piece. And the contract is sort of just a thing.
Right, it's just like a piece of paper.
Yeah, it's just a piece of paper. It's more an acknowledgement on our part that DCF has notified that the student has been placed there and that we are aware of that. We are agreeing to the contract. However, we are not, the agreement's not required in order for us to have to be responsible to fund 50% of that placement.
Right. So basically, whether we pay this bill or not, we're going to be legally responsible to pay it. Whether we agree or not that this child should be placed there, we don't have a say. Okay. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody out there. I am not for GED therapy. I've said that in the past two meetings. We've been talking about this since June, not for it. I also know that the best way to get that done is by making sure that Massachusetts changes laws. Something else I noticed in your document, 297 total students. They have 22 were from Massachusetts, is that correct? So this, no?
No. So they have 297 total clients. They serve both school-aged students and adults.
Okay.
And they service 22 communities in Massachusetts.
22 communities in Massachusetts, okay. But these students are all from Massachusetts?
No, they have students from not only all over the country, but from other areas.
Okay. And when I looked at the data, it looked like more students were from out of Massachusetts than in Massachusetts. Not that that's totally relevant, but I'm just saying, this isn't a Massachusetts Fall River thing. I don't agree with the therapy, but there's two things that I'm concerned about. Number one is when we're talking about healthcare. And that's essentially what this is falling under. We're talking about education, right? But the child is also placed there for healthcare needs, correct? Mental health needs. Is that accurate? I know you can't tell us what's going on with the child. We don't even know the child's name or any of the child's diagnoses. But I'm pretty sure if that child was placed at JRC, the diagnoses list is wrong and is not just on the spectrum for autism.
Fair.
I mean, I think that's extremely fair to say, and I know you can't say it, but I'll happily say it. So we have a child who's suffering from probably numerous mental health diagnoses. We can't find a facility for him. DCF is saying, this is where this child needs to go because we don't have anywhere else for him to go. I mean, I think this is great that we've had this conversation, but I think the conversation really needs to be, why don't we have more mental health services for our youth? Why don't we have more facilities that can assist our youth? Why don't we make laws so that you just can't hire a staff member who's 18 to come in and get paid $15 an hour with no mental health experience to zap kids? That's what the conversation should be. That's not what we were elected to do. And I appreciate the advocating that's coming from the body, as I would love to do outside of my position here. But I was elected to hire a superintendent, evaluate a superintendent, pass policy, approve curriculum, approve a budget. I wasn't elected to tell DCF or a parent how they're supposed to care for their child. So it's a slippery slope. If we're going to sit here and criticize or determine where a child should or shouldn't be placed as a school committee body, not talking about you two, you should be the ones inputting. We don't know a child's name. We don't know a name. We don't have a diagnosis. We have zero information. So in my opinion, we are 100% overstepping your role. We're overstepping the role of a DCF worker who I'm going to assume is doing her job. There's bad DCF workers. There's bad politicians. There's bad teachers. There's bad politicians. But I'm going to assume as a whole that this woman, if she's a DCF worker, has dedicated her life to the protection and care of children, and that she is making, or he is making, the best or possibly only choice for this child. I can't imagine this child is foster care eligible based on a plethora of issues. So yes, I don't like the facility. I think it should be closed down. But if anybody in the community thinks that us not giving them $176,000 is going to shut their doors, no way. It's not going to happen. That's one kid. DCF will cover that cost for that child, and then they'll come after us for them. Because legally, we're obligated to pay for it of no fault of our own. Because as school committee members, we should not be making healthcare decisions about children that are not ours. I certainly wouldn't want anybody to do that to me. What's next? We have a body of committee members who don't believe ADD exists and Adderall doesn't exist, so we're going to tell nurses, you got to stop giving it at school because we, morally, feel like it's not good. We're overstepping as a school committee, in my opinion. Again, I do not want that to be taken as, I'm okay with GED therapy or I'm okay with this facility, because I'm not. And I have no problem speaking out against that. But I think that is where we can advocate as Shelley Pereira, mother, and caseworker at the DTA versus Shelley Pereira, who was elected to be on the school committee. And I think that's important, that we understand what our roles are here. And unfortunately, you know, even, I think people maybe misunderstand what our role is as a school committee, and that's understandable. I get it. We had a whole meeting when I first got elected telling us what our roles are. Nothing on there told me I'm supposed to tell the special ed department where they're supposed to place kids. It's not my job. My job is to question it, which we have thoroughly, we've thoroughly vetted this. And I know we like to use the terms moral and ethics, and morals and ethics are not black and white. That's why there's courses in college on it. It might be immoral and unethical for me to go steal food from Stop &amp; Shop, but if I'm homeless and my kid's starving and I'm stealing food, maybe some people think that's moral because I'm feeding my child. So we can't sit here and use this kid as, 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 uh, as an object in our advocacy for something we disagree with. The advocating needs to happen. It should happen not on our role as, on the school committee, but it should happen outwardly. And I've expressed that interest to my colleagues, that that's something I'd be happy to do. But what my job is when I'm sitting up here is to pay a bill. So I appreciate everybody's advocating. I'm sure others have more to say, and I'm sure others will disagree with me. And that is fine. But in my opinion, the road has to stop here. We have to pay the bill. The advocating can continue. But we can't make a policy that we don't allow kids to be placed there because if DCF wants to place them there, we don't have a choice, correct?
Yes.
So we can talk about it and pat ourselves on the back, like, oh, we're doing such a good thing. Nothing's going to happen. We can't do it. So why don't we instead focus our energies on what we can do? That's my opinion. I am not, I'm not going to vote to table this again today, I'll tell you that. I hope others can understand that there's other ways we can go about this, and this isn't the way. Let's pay this bill, and let's find out different ways to advocate for these youths that are in facilities such as JRC. With that, I thank you again for all your hard work. I really do appreciate it. And with that, I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
I do. Okay. So first of all, I found those arguments to be extremely condescending and completely missing the point. So I am going to say that it is well within our purview to make determinations about what placements we are going to fund for our students. No, it's not relevant in terms of each particular student, but if we're putting money into something, that has to be something that we value. The very beginning of the budget cycle, we talked about, we fund what we value. Is this what we can honestly say what we value? I would like to think no. And from what I understand from everybody here, the idea is that, no, we don't agree with that. We don't agree with, and I have a hard time using the word therapy because this isn't therapy nor is it treatment that's being done. I am aware that this vote is likely going to pass, but I want to stress that even though my colleagues are going to vote to pass, to pay for this contract, that doesn't mean they're necessarily wrong, but the thought process behind it was definitely incorrect. You're looking at a different perspective than I am, and that's okay. I can only do so much with my one vote. But to say that we don't have purview in what we're funding, we fund what we value. We stood here and we said that at the beginning of the budget cycle, and I'm going to continue to reiterate that. I don't believe that we can, in good conscience, fund a placement like this regardless of what DCF proposed. And to say that we are fiscally responsible regardless, yeah, we are. However, a cost share is a collaborative process. No one entity has the ultimate decision-making authority, but that discourse didn't take place at the time that placement was proposed. I'm aware, fully aware, of what the consequences are of not paying this tuition bill. And I maintain that those costs are absolutely worth risking for the sake of doing what is right for this kid. I am not willing to put one child at greater risk of harm by using a placement that's implementing forms of torture. I didn't make that determination. The United Nations, the FDA, and the autistic and disabled advocates did. No matter how shiny or bright or clean the facility might be, it's still actively engaging in practices that cause harm. Our student is still witnessing the torture of other students from other states in this placement. Yes, it is 100% accurate that we have to go through all of these hoops in order to get a GED authorized for an IEP. However, that only applies to states that have put that in place. Massachusetts is one of them. There is a reason why most of those students come from New York, and our kids are witnessing that torture every single day. Our student is still witnessing the torture of other students in this placement. I stand firmly in the opposition. I cannot, I can't sit here and say that it's okay to fund a placement that completely goes against any of our mission of inclusion and belonging. And yes, again, I am going to reiterate, it is well within our purview to question what placements and programs we are investing in for our students. We do the same thing with curriculum. We should be doing the same thing with placements. That doesn't mean that I have the final decision or anyone here has the decision about what makes sense for a student. But I can tell you that keeping a student in a placement like this and choosing to fund it absolutely supports the work that they are doing over at the JRC. I refuse, I will not, under any circumstance, support a placement like this. And with that, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so part of the problem that I am seeing here is we, you went on the site visit. We've gotten a lot of information. But there's contradictory information that we get from the conversations here, the emails that we got. So I don't feel confident in some of the answers that we've gotten on what we can and can't do. One was just asked by Ms. Pereira about whether we can sign off or can't sign off, and what can we do? Last month, we were told, right at this podium, that we can't, we can sign off and we will not be sending anybody else to that place. That's contradictory to the information that we got by email as well as what we're hearing here today.
So what I said to you is that we wouldn't, and we didn't, when DCF reached out to us regarding another student, agree to the cost share, but that I did not know what our authority was in that, and that I would get legal guidance. And so I did get legal guidance, and the legal guidance was, even if we say we are not in agreement, DCF still has the authority to place, and we are still responsible for 50%.
So that other student that was waiting is in, should we have a second student there now?
No.
How does that make any sense?
That student has not been placed anywhere yet.
But they wanted to place them at least over a month ago at that place because that's when we were told here.
And so they have sent out, they are trying to work with us. And so, yeah, they have continued to look for a placement. Will they find one? Will that be, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I'm not part of the search. They are conducting that search. But I did ask for legal guidance, and so the legal guidance was that because it is a residential placement through DCF, we are responsible for 50% irregardless of whether we've signed a contract.
And every residential placement that has an educational component is all the same? We don't have any children that go to a residential place and then a residential placement go to school in another place?
We do. We do have some. It depends on the student's needs and the ability of different facilities to meet the child's needs and the services in the IEP.
So how does that, how does that go with what you just said the legal counsel was, that if you have a residential placement, you were locked into that site?
Because DCF will place some students in a residential facility, and then they attend public school programs in the district. They may attend day placement in the district that the student is residing in. That's not appropriate for all students. It depends on what's in the child's IEP and what's appropriate for the student.
So theoretically, they could take the residential portion that DCF, as the parent says that the student stay in there, and have the student be educated in another school?
If they had been accepted to another program and that was appropriate for them, that is possible.
So they're not locked together?
Not, not in all cases, no.
Right. That's the, so the lawyer writes, "I didn't like attorney Joyce's, it was very confusing. It wasn't very clear to me, and it contradicted a whole bunch of things." That's one of them, that whether the student can go to one place or another. I just don't like the way that the whole thing was handled right from the get-go. And if the superintendent, yourself, the directors, feel that students are safe and we want to send kids here, then I think it's incumbent upon you to tell us you're going to send more kids here, there. If you truly feel like that's the case. Because if you say, you went on the site visit, which is, I think, what it's saying, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but this is what I'm feeling, that the superintendent, on our request, sent you all, as the directors, to go up to look at the site. You came back with a glowing thing to say that you felt like the kids were getting a good education, quality education. You're comfortable with it. That's what I think I'm hearing from you all. So if that's the case and you truly believe that, you should be telling us as a school committee that you're going to send more kids there if need be. I think what's happening here is we're losing sight of whether, well, we were to pay for this one, if we have to pay for this one. But you can't, in the one hand, say that you think it's okay that student's getting a good education, he's not seeing any harm or whatever it is, but then we're not going to send any more kids there. I'm having a hard time with that.
So I think what we did was we went and got the information that you requested, right? And so we're telling you the facility appeared. It was clean. The students were happy by their expressions on their face. They were engaged in learning activities. They had, you know, jobs that we got to witness. So what we're saying is we're giving you the information on this facility. This is not a facility that any district would place their kids at because it is a residential facility for DCF. Like, that's not, in my opinion, there's a lot more that would go into this facility before we could say, oh, yep, send more kids there. We saw the only piece that we are responsible for. That is the school setting. And we gave you the information so that you could make an informed decision on what you wanted to do as a school committee, understanding what the ramifications would be from our legal guidance, like Kristen said, should you not fund this by a vote. So that's all we were doing, Mr. Aguirre. We're not-
But the question is, and this was brought up at the meeting. We are school committee members, part-time. You all are administrators that get paid very well to do your jobs. And what we asked was to go out, look at it, and then come back with a recommendation on what we should do. So that's what I'm asking you to take a stand here. I'm asking you, Ms. Farias, and Mrs. Ponce to take a stand and say whether you think that you should send more students to this school. Are you comfortable with that?
We don't, we don't, we're not going to put children in a residential. That's not our job. That's what you're hearing from us. We went there and we're saying that we are liable to pay the bill. This child is placed. Forty-one packets went out to try to find a placement for this child. This is the placement, the residential placement that was deemed appropriate by DCF. We're saying we went there to see what we were asked to do. But we wouldn't automatically say that's our option. We have a student that has these needs. This is what we're going to recommend. That is a residential placement.
Right. But the question is, are we going to send more students there? Are we going to protest it?
We don't, well, no. We don't send them there.
Did you send the student there?
No.
You sent, you sent. Did you send the student there?
We did not.
Who sent the student there?
Excuse me.
DCF.
Excuse me.
Ms. Prair.
Sorry.
Ms. Prair, don't jump in, please.
Well, you know what?
I know, but hold on.
I'm just going to go in dash and whatever, like, let it go in.
I know, I know. It is, it is confusing. We did not send the student there. We picked up a DCF placement. Mr. Aguirre has the floor. Sorry.
Thank you. The question that we had earlier, which was-
So, Mr. Aguirre, you did not ask us to go there to make a programmatic evaluation of the building. You asked us to go there to see the facility, to get information specific to your questions about their use of GED, about the program this student was in. We got the answers to those questions. But in fairness, we spent an hour and a half there. And so we haven't fully evaluated the educational program there. We went there to see the facility, to see the environment, which we did. We were comfortable with the environment. We saw, we were given unlimited access to the classrooms. We saw multiple classrooms. We weren't restricted from seeing any classrooms in the facility and pretty much left to direct where we wanted them to take us. Did we spend time going through the curriculum? Did we look programmatically deeply at, to determine whether or not it's something we would propose as a placement educationally for a student? We did not do that.
Well, I think that's, sort of goes without us having to ask that question to the superintendent and the directors, that you would look at programs before we sent students there.
But we didn't send a student there. And we're not asking to send additional students there. What we're saying is we are being billed for this placement that was made by DCF. And the determination is, are we paying this bill?
And we, and we were told at that podium, like you just said, that you don't want to send any future students there. And we will not send future students there. That's what was said to this committee. That's the part that I'm having a problem with as far as the whole system, the whole, the whole way that it went down. When you were there, for instance, Ms. Rodrick just brought up a point that other students can get this treatment that don't reside in Massachusetts.
I followed up with that, from that question. And any student, regardless of the state that they live in, under the age of 22, follows the same process.
So how, when you went to visit, how do, is there like a room or something where they get to see, where they monitor this type of activity? Was that happening when you were there?
Was anyone utilizing the GED?
Yeah.
They have not utilized the GED on students in several years. So no.
They currently do not have any school-aged students, any students there via their IEP services receiving that particular treatment.
And the facility has adults they don't?
Adults aren't in the facility that we visited because we've visited the school program. So there are no adults in that particular building.
So when they get to residential, which is like, sort of the same thing?
They live in different houses and apartments in the communities. So we don't go there because that's, again, not something we would ever fund. That's on DCF.
So you weren't able to see monitors or anything because you're saying it doesn't exist?
We actually got to see their whole room of monitoring, the entire campus. We got to look at all the cameras. They're on full monitoring. We didn't see anything on there that was using adverses. But again, that is only in the school because then after hours, those monitors go into the residence. And they are fully watched by their staff.
Yeah.
We did not observe the adult day program. We would have no grounds to observe the adult day program. And so we didn't have that opportunity.
Yeah. The, you know where I stand on the issue. I think that it's a tough situation. But as Ms. Rodrick said, if we continue to just pay, if all these districts continue to pay, they're just going to continue to operate until they get shut down or they are not allowed to use it. The total, we're never going to, we're going to keep having the same argument. And with this case here, I do think we have to pay. But I think at some point, we have to make a decision to say, you know what? We're not, we're not going to take it. We're not going to, we're not going to pay it. And if we, they want to take us to court, let them take us to court and try to make the issue more public. Because without that, they're never going to change. It's going to be the same thing. So I don't think it's a big risk for us in doing that. I do think we're going to pay next year too. And I think we're going to pay again when another student goes there. And I feel like we shouldn't be saying that we're not going to send kids there if we don't have the say or, that's still up in the air. But I just don't think we should be saying it. And I want you all to know, as far as this member, I want you to come and make recommendations before us. To say, I recommend that we do this or we don't do that. But right now, I don't have that recommendation. So I'm going to vote my conscience and say, I'm voting no. We're not paying the bill and we can move on. With that, I yield.
Ms. Prair.
I just want people in the community to understand, just so I'm clear, because a lot of people are using, you sent, you sent. There are times where a child is placed in a residential facility but then can manage going to a public school in the area. Right? Perhaps they are, you know, placed here and they're still attending class. They get bussed in or a staff member brings them in. What happens? A facility like JRC, I don't think that there are any students there that are attending educational services somewhere else. The reason being is because they are extreme, extreme cases of childhood trauma and mental health that need to be cared for. And I appreciate those of my colleagues, all of my colleagues who are trying to advocate. What I have an issue with is that we're saying, we know what's best for this kid. But we don't know the child's name. We don't know the diagnoses. But you know who does? The DCF worker. They know. They're the ones in charge of the care and protection of this child. So what happens if next time it's a parent who shows up here and tells us this is what they want for their child because this placement is best for their child? Are we going to sit here and look at the parent and say, meh, I don't know your kid's name, but I'm morally opposed to it. So therefore, I'm going to put my morals on you. That's not the way it should work. I'm not saying we shouldn't advocate against this place. I've said it a million times. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to get on some, you know, for lack of a better word, a high horse and tell somebody who is responsible for this kid, who knows everything about this child that we don't, that they're making the wrong choice. It could be very much the case that this child is there because we don't know. I mean, I've worked with this population of kids. He could have, he or she could have self-harming behavior. He or she could have already physically hurt or endangered another person. You don't go to the JRC because you're able to function. You go there because you need 24/7 care. So you're right, it's not the best place. But if it keeps that kid alive until we find better placement and keeps that child safe and the DCF worker thinks that's where the child should be, no disrespect to you two ladies, but I don't think you should be placing our children, our students, in residential facilities. It's not your job. It's not your job. If, you know, is it your job to make sure that edu, the educational portion is getting done? Yeah. That's your job. And you're doing it. So I don't think that it's your responsibility to be the educator, the DCF worker, the parent. And the reason, I'm guessing, that you have not signed off to place another child there was because we as a committee told you not to. You didn't come up here, did you? Did you? You didn't come up here and say, I'm so opposed to this. I've decided I'm not going to place another child. You didn't do that. We told you. If you do it, we're not going to pay. So we tied our hands. Now we find out it doesn't matter if we pay or not. We're going to pay. So I get advocating, but I think advocating on the backs of our taxpayers is not okay. Because we're going to pay. We're going to pay. The question is, do we also have to pay litigation? I don't know. I'm guessing if we continue to do this type of thing and tell DCF how they're supposed to do their job, I'm guessing that's what we're going to have to do. And I don't think you'll find an attorney that disagrees with me there. But everybody's welcome to ask legal opinion from somebody else. But the reality is DCF has care of this student. We have to pay. We want to make a stand against this place. There are a million ways we can do it. And it doesn't have to be from this stage. It just doesn't. It wasn't what we elected to do. And quite frankly, placing a child in residential care is not your job either. And I'm sure you do the best that you can for the children in our schools and their educational needs. And I appreciate that. Unless somebody else has anything to say, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I've had my hand raised.
I'll make a, I'll make a second on that. But I also too wanted to thank both of you and your team and Superintendent Ponce for you guys going to the facility and coming back to us with a report. I really appreciate it. Nobody up here is for GED, not at all. And I think anybody that, even out in the audience tonight or watching tonight is for that. But it's, it exists. And I think our job now, as Committeewoman Pereira has suggested, made the motion seconded and to approve it. So I know there's two line items here. We've got to take one at a time, I think, isn't there?
Okay. The first bill is-
I've had my, I've had my hand raised with a comment.
Ms. Rodrick?
And we can, can we have somebody turn that up because we cannot hear it.
Yeah. We can't hear that a lot.
Back there, Evan, is that you? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rodrick.
Okay. So again, I have a lot of issue with some of the statements that were made because they're problematic when we're talking about the disability population. Wait, not one person has stood here and said that we know what's best for this particular child. What we are denouncing is the placement itself. It is not about what should be in this child's IEP or what should not be in this child's IEP. What it is is whether or not we are going to use our position to support a placement like this. Not just for this child, but for any child. And in regards to the statement that they haven't used GED on students, school-aged students for several years, I can tell you that there is a very public case from 2021, just last year, where a student from New York, school-aged student, this is a 13-year-old, who suffered third-degree burns as a result of their GED use. So I would encourage folks, and I am requesting that we get a second legal opinion, number one. Because I certainly have worked in situations where the LEA is in strong disagreement to the particular residential placement that DCF proposed for a variety of reasons. And the school department is, was not responsible. And that is, the guidance from DESI had come out, I think it was 2004, 2006. On top of it, I would suggest that we're looking at this as a global decision, not a this particular student shouldn't be placed there. We've got to get that out of the conversation. Not one person, again, is sitting here saying that we oppose this placement because we know what's right for this kid. I don't know what's right for this kid. I don't know this kid. But I do know that using a placement like this is detrimental to all of our kids. And if we are going to claim that we are going to fund what we value, we cannot be funding this. And in regards to whether or not we place children, there are also situations where school departments, where LEAs fully fund residential placement because they can't get DCF to agree or DMH to agree. So there's a lot of nuance here that's not being discussed. And I am suggesting, I'm requesting that we get a second legal opinion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the second line item.
Get a second. Motion, looking for a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll.
Could I have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Aguirre, go ahead.
Just, I want to just comment on what Ms. Rodrick just said. The, when I read the report from Mr. Joyce, the attorney, I don't think it was well-written. I think it was confusing. So I do think we should get a second opinion moving forward, not so much on this particular case, but on what our rights are. Because I'm just not so sure that we're getting the right information. So I'm going to vote no again. But in the future, I do think we should get some clarity so that we're all on the same page, including the folks in the department, yourself, Madam Superintendent, so that we can, we can know what we can and cannot do and not making statements and then having to, you know, backtrack on them. So I would encourage that from the superintendent.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Approval of grants. I have a number of grants. I'd like to take them all at once.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any holds? Mr. Aguirre?
I just, we don't have to hold. Just have a question. So on the early child, early college grant, it says something about people are going to get overtime for administrators or some other sort of stipend for administrators. And I'm just curious who that is and what that means.
Good evening. So within the early college support grant, which is designed to support the overall success of the early college programs for district and to help them align with the five pillars of early college, which includes equitable access, connection to career, guided academic pathway, and strong partnerships. They, we have various stipends. The ones that you're referring to for administrators, we have about $10,000 for counselors, administrators, part of the early college leadership team to do a couple of things. The first is to build a family engagement pipeline with a focus on students, grade seven through nine. So going out in the communities in the evenings and on weekends, holding focus groups, et cetera, getting buy-in and awareness out there in the community. The second is to work on a multilingual website and brochure to support families who have a first language other than English and understanding the importance of early college and the opportunity for their students. The third is for planning for our expansion. We're looking to grow each year and that is logistical and supports that are needed to build when we increase the number of students and staff involved. Finally, we'll be working on updated MOUs with Bridgewater State and Bristol Community College as they're set to expire at the end of June for our initial MOU. So that's essentially what the administrator stipends would go to.
When you say administrator, what positions are you speaking of?
So I'm talking about myself, the department head of guidance, school counselors, and at the middle and high school level, essentially. We also have some stipends for our early college advisors as well as teachers to support focus groups, academic tutoring, et cetera.
I mean, the grant that, at the bottom where it says the teachers, I think, explained a little more. Some of what you just described to me is part of an administrator's duty in general. Like if, you know, you're the, what's your- in general, like if, you know, you're the, what's your title? The head of guidance?
Director of Guidance.
Of, for the district and you have a small caseload at Derfie?
I do not have a caseload at Derfie. I work with multiple schools. There's the department head at Derfie.
So you have no, so we have a second department head of guidance besides you? We have one at Derfie besides you, your old position?
Correct.
Interesting. The, the question I'm having is, I think some of that, what you described, is part of what people normally would be doing. So it's not very clearly defined, in my opinion. But in, in a grant, can that be changed if the superintendent or yourself like check into it and...
Well, we would have to amend, whenever we change a grant, anything that, any changes to a grant, we would have to amend and get it approved again. Submit it.
Well, I'm saying as far as like, I, I didn't, I wasn't clear. What I meant was if, I don't think that you know the intricacies of who, who's going to get stipends, but if as you look into it and you say, "No, I think that, you know, they should get it, this one shouldn't get it," that can fall within, it doesn't, it doesn't lock the name in.
Right. When, when we write the grant, it doesn't, there are no names attached. And then when those stipend sheets are submitted, then that's, it's approved after, after the fact.
Yeah, so if you felt that there weren't the right people or something, you could, that's all I would ask is that you take a look at it because I, I don't think that when we're, we're paying administrators pretty good money, I think, in my opinion. And just, we have to be careful of how many stipends we're giving across the district. So, thank you. Thank you.
Can I get a motion and second?
You already did.
I already did. Deb, please call the roll on grants.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole. Item number one, we addressed in finance tonight, discussion and vote to approve the HVAC lighting improvements to various schools as presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey?
He's there, he underwent somewhere.
He just stepped out of the room.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.2 is a vote to approve the selection and appointment of Christine Kovalev.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion on the nurse? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.3 is a discussion and vote to approve the spring slash fall 2022 CTE advisory.
Motion approved.
As presented by Christine, Cynthia Sylvia, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the board members?
Comment.
Mr. Agia?
Just want to, it's not a question, it's just a comment, that the time that I've been here, we haven't seen a list like this that came out where there's a lot of people in the community. So I think things are going in the right direction there, and I just wanted to make sure we, we recognize that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.4 is a discussion and vote to approve an administrative assistant position.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the administrative assistant? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.5 is a discussion and vote to approve the audiovisual technician job description as referred by the subcommittee and presented by Tom Kugan.
Motion approved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that position? Audiovisual techno- technician. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so when we had talked about this at the subcommittee, we were talking about the need for the department. And as I'm looking at this, it almost appears that this is very similar to one of the positions or those mini electrician positions that run wires and that...
Low voltage.
Low voltage people. When, one of the issues that we had talked about was security, outside security, running wiring and stuff. So my thought at the time was to, if we have somebody that can do this work in-house in one of those lower, low voltage positions, that we could potentially move them into a position and actually hire a full electrician that could do some of the electrical work. Because I think the, I think the way the process goes is Mr. Cabral has to actually say to some, you have to ask somebody to use those people from a different department, and the goal was to put a person sort of under you. Does that make sense?
Correct. When, when Mr. Pacheco and I discussed the position, I think moving forward, what our plan is, is to have the low voltage electricians do the wiring piece and to have this technician that's on the technology side be responsible for the device. So up until this point, we really hadn't had the discussions. The low voltage electrician did some wiring at the new PACE Center, has done some other wiring for us. But moving forward, the thought process is, is that side of the house will take care of the wiring piece, and then this technician will fill the need that we have with all of the AV stuff as far as installing the end piece device after the wiring.
So who does that now?
Who does the installing of the devices? Myself or one of the people that I've trained in the department. So I'm taking someone that's typically a technician of computers and phones and using them or myself after hours or, you know, carving some time out on the day to do it. So moving forward, this person would be responsible for that piece, for all of the audiovisual control systems that are just in this building. Moving forward, swapping out audiovisual control systems in the other schools. I'm going to be coming to you at the subcommittee in future months. We have to do something in some of our cafeterias and many of the elementary schools. This will allow all that work to be done in-house and, and, you know, strengthen the team internally, but also using Ken's side of the house to do the backend wiring, and we come in and clean everything up.
So the, when we had hired the low voltage people, I believe at the time it was meant, and we, I think we hired more than one, was to do something like this type of stuff already. So my question is, is are they doing that full-time now and they can't get to this?
That's correct, Ms. Agia. We hired two people. One of them is doing almost all of our fire protection, all of our devices, whether it be smoke alarms, the panels, the enunciator panels, who that, that particular person was doing our work as a subcontractor with his, with his father and other people in that business for quite a few years. So he left that company, is working for us now and doing the fire side of it. We do have one other person who's doing low voltage, but also doing some low voltage for us, for instance, at the PACE of the sped, the new special ed's offices and other things like that. I, I think that it would be along the lines that you were talking, if we put this person in the union as an electrician, which would give us three straight electricians. So advertise a job as a union job. The salary is almost the same. It's almost there already. And just add this into the maintenance department with the stipulation that Mr. Cabral has the access to that person on a priority basis and therefore could do some of these installations, and we wouldn't be banging up against any kind of conflict with the union electricians.
So how does that affect this position?
All I'm saying is, is let this electrician, let this position become a union position out of the maintenance department, and then we can dedicate a person to Mr. Cabral at that point because we won't be losing anybody on the electrical side. At some point, I'm sure that he may have two. If we're working outside the buildings, putting up stuff on poles, we're going to need someone with, you know, a hoisting license to operate a bucket truck. At that point, we'll make sure that those electricians all have that license. A couple of them do right now. But that'll aid in, in making sure that Mr. Cabral's department has adequate personnel. And we, again, we won't have an issue with the union piece of duplicating work outside the union.
Well, this, there's no license requirement on this position. So it wouldn't pay, i- if it does pay the same as a licensed person, I think that's a problem.
Well, I think if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So I think that if this person's going to be doing the same work we did the low voltage electricians' work, which is kind of similar, the only difference is, is our electrician, our low voltage electricians are not hanging equipment. I'm not sure if they actually have helped out. But if, you know, I, I don't think that it's a far, I don't think it's a far...
Yeah, I, I think we're trying to say the same thing. So, and my, my thought is that we have a person right now in low voltage that's actually able to do this work.
I would, I would think...
And what I'm saying is, whatever mechanism you need to do, to me, it makes more sense for the district to put that person in doing this job and hire a full electrician, not a low voltage electrician, so that we have the highest level of what you talked about, the licenses, the, you know, I don't necessarily think we need an extra one. So when you came to us to say you need two low voltage people, this was some of the stuff that that person...
Yes.
So I supported that at the time because I felt, yeah, this makes sense. We need somebody to do this. The problem is that they don't work directly under Mr. Cabral. So I think we're saying the same thing. But when we have a person on site that already can do it, to me, it makes sense to put that person in this position and hire a full electrician that can do the bigger pieces.
I, I think though that there may be a situation, and again, I agree with you 100%. I, I think the other piece of this is the possibility of putting up a piece of equipment on a wall that doesn't have a 110 outlet is possible. And therefore, we have to bring in another electrician. So you know, you have the low voltage person working there and you have this electrician. What I'm saying is exactly what you're saying. If we hire an electrician, we let this person go over when needed, but it would be nice to have a person outside of the ones we've already hired on the electrical side. I think that Mr. Monus needs everybody he has. Add that other, make this position a full electrician at the disposal of Mr. Cabral whenever they need him, and that low voltage person the same thing. And when he has a project, he has both. He doesn't have to worry about bringing in somebody that Mr. Monus may already have assigned somewhere else.
I think, now I think I understand what you're saying is, you're saying that what is before us you don't agree with, we think you should add the qualifications that is a full electrician.
And let it be full electrician.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
And, and right back, and right in the maintenance department, but again, with an agreement, which will be fine on both sides. I'm sure that Mr. Cabral has that access to those people whenever he needs them. And he doesn't have to necessarily wait while those other electricians right now are already assigned.
So instead of this position, you want to hire an electrician?
I don't know if that's, I'm, I'm speaking here, but I'm not sure Mr. Cabral's in agreement.
I just, the position that's there is not, we weren't looking for an electrical piece. I mean, if that's going to help the, you know, the district and it's going to help the maintenance side, you know, I'm a team player, I'll do whatever is agreed upon. But I just, when you look at the roles and responsibilities of this position, it's, it's not an electrician.
Can we, can we substitute a job description, Mr. Agia, for the electrician for this position right now?
I mean, the other piece is, if you want to table it, and we can talk internally and come back next month as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I only was saying this because we were, and I think Mr. Pacheco agreed with me, that at the time when we hired the low voltage people, this was the work they were doing. So in my mind, I'm saying, why are we going to add another one if it helps the district? And, you know, if that person has the set, then keep, I agree with you, put it, the union, so the gentleman gets paid or whoever it is, if they have it. So I make a motion to table so we can get more feedback.
Second it.
I got a motion to table and a second. Deb, can I call the roll?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.6 is a discussion and vote to approve the special education interpreter and translator
Motion to approve.
Job description as presented by Tom Kugan. I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Go ahead, Tom.
This position is a critical one to the special needs department. During IEP meetings, during document translation, a certain level of skill is required. Now, previously, we had two people that were labeled as community facilitators dedicated to sped, and they would help in those meetings, assist in those meetings and do the translations for the, for the legal documents around a student's education plan. We recently lost one at the beginning of the summer. And, you know, in, in looking at the reasons why we lost the person, there's a little bit of a differentiation in the skill level between what we traditionally have used as a community facilitator, somebody who can speak another language, can assist families with the, their interactions with the department, the legal documentation, the certificate that's required for translating those documents. It's a little bit different skill set. So what we're basically proposing is a dedicated interpreter and translator for the disposal of the special education department. And again, there's two of those budgeted, but this is just at a little higher rate.
Any questions?
I have a motion approved.
There's a motion already.
We already have a motion and second.
Yes.
Okay. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jhar? Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.7 is a discussion and vote to approve the board docs as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Well, we're actually asked to add this to the agenda. Board docs, as you know, is the, our repository that we use for our school committee agendas, minutes, videos, et cetera. I do, the contract actually was approved tonight in contracts. That was for this year. I do think that we need to, I've spoken to our team. We've spoken to Mr. Farias as well as Mr. Cabral, and we need to assess the effectiveness and how we're using it, if we are maximizing the contract, and also compare it to what our website does. And then we can come back to this committee for moving forward. I think we have a contract for the remaining of the, remainder of the year. But I, I do think that what we will do is, we will assess its effectiveness, how we're using it, and then come back with a recommendation for next year.
And when does the contract end?
The end of the school year.
June, June 30th? June, June 30th?
Yes.
Okay. So we have till June 30th. Mr. Aguirre?
So several things that I, I don't think are appropriate. So it was on the agenda on the contracts, but we talked that that would have to wait till this vote because the, the discussion on the vote for the contract should have, that should have been held instead of just letting it go through. And I could have picked it up the same, but I've asked a lot of questions and tried to hold a lot of things. But to me, that shouldn't even have been put on there, knowing that we have it as an agenda item, a thing in the agenda. The other thing is that it sounds like as if we've already approved it, but then now we're paying a contract. That's what I'm hearing tonight.
What, what do you mean?
So it's already been in existence. We've committed to it already.
We have a three-year contract, which this is the final year, in the final year. And our job is going to be to reassess, to see if we are maximizing the, the platform and if we need to make any changes.
Right. So it says that the renewal term, unless the parties give 30 days notice before the renewal. So we just let this roll over, in my opinion, without it coming to us to say. So this is on the agenda for the contract tonight and it's December.
Right. This is when we got billed. That's why it's on the agenda.
So in the contract, it says that you provided to us here. Those terms starts 90 days after the signing of it. So that was on April 8th of 2020. So that probably was meant for July 1. So my point is that it went July 1, July, again. Somebody's got to be watching this so that we can know if we want to get out of the contract, well, whether we would like to get out of the, the contract before it actually comes up. Now, $18,000 is not a lot of money when we're talking millions of dollars. But I've, I asked for this to be on the agenda because this is a total, in my opinion, it's a total waste of money. Because we're not utilizing it in any way that we couldn't get it for free. We could have a computer with the website, with email, with Google Docs that has all of the information that we currently have, right, at our, ready at our fingertips on every single meeting. But we're paying $18,000 for board docs, and I've asked for several months, what is it? Why? Why do we need this? This is a waste of money. And the answer I got was because it gives us a one place that we can look at all of our stuff. Well, the first thing I would say is let's, why don't we look at our website? Because our website for, under the school committee is terrible. When you look at the minutes on the website, you can't even figure out what it is and which ones are which. So all I feel we have to do for free is go there and say, this is what we need to do. But we're going to pay $18,000 just because, oh, that, I guess that's the way it is. It was a contract and we don't really, you know, want to look into it too much. So I asked this to be on a vote because I'm, I want to vote no because I think it's a waste of money. And if we're going to say we're going to watch the, the dollars and cents, then I think we need to do that. And this is a total waste of money. So I think it was wrong the way it went through. I think it was wrong to put it on the contracts at the start of the meeting without saying anything. And so I, I'll make a motion to, to quit it.
But Ms. Pereira?
I have a couple of questions on board docs. I saw it on the agenda. I didn't think we'd pull it off because I, I know that this was like a three-year contract. So I thought we were discussing like after April when it, you know, when it ends. So I, I don't think it was shady, for lack of a better word. But, so I have a couple of questions. I don't know who can answer them, honestly. Maybe somebody up here, maybe somebody down there. But Kevin, you made a point to say, Mr. Aguirre made a point to say that there's other outlets that we could get for free, right? Like the website or Google Docs or what have you. Now, what would that look like in terms of, because I'll tell you what I do like about it, is that I can go back and look and reference documents because we don't just get the agenda on it. We get attached documents to it and such. And I know that there was an email sent out not too long ago saying that there was going to be a board docs training to, I'm assuming that there's more that we can do with board docs that we're not aware of? Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay. So nobody here really can.
No, we, we actually, you know, this is, I will say, Mr. Aguirre, you know, this is the first time that anyone has actually requested. We haven't gotten any complaints about it until now. Certainly, when it was brought to our attention and to question, we have, I, I've talked to Mr. Farias, I've talked to Mr., we have looked at, what are we getting for it? There is much more that can be done with it. I don't think we're maximizing the opportunity. Certainly, our website, Mr. Farias said today, he said, I'm not sure. We have to look to see how that would interface, the videos, that's something we have to look at, how we would attach them to the agendas like they are in board docs, which is why we said, okay, so let's look at exactly what it is that our website can do. Let's look at what board docs offers us before we enter and, and continue with the contract. It's not because we don't want to look at it. Certainly, it was on the agenda because the contracts came, the bill came in. We put it on, on there and we were asked to put it on the agenda. Certainly, any member on this committee, this is your meeting, anybody on this committee could have said, we hold this one just like we held other contracts until after the discussion. So I apologize if it looked like we tried to slip anything in, but we certainly are committed to looking at what is best for our district. There's lots of work that needs to be done with our website, absolutely. Mr. Cabral and I have had many discussions about that. We are going to work through that and, and if we can do it for free, of course. We're, we're not going to spend money just for the sake of spending money.
Who, who does the website?
Well.
Currently, right now, we do not have a webmaster.
That's probably why it's not that great.
Well, our website is by a company. It's a, it's a, it's basically a shell. So a lot of school districts use it. So it's kind of a drag and drop piece. There are individuals trained at every building that are supposed to be updating their websites. Some of the department heads update their side. The district piece is really shared between Mr. Farias, myself, members of the instructional technology team because we all have other job duties. So we're sharing those, you know, those pieces.
So it's a mishmash of people.
Correct.
All working in tandem to get the website together.
And one of my pieces, and Superintendent and I have talked about this, but it was not the time to redevelop a website while we were bringing Parent Square and Power School on. So it is on the short list of things to look at. However, you know, that is going to be a substantial project. Whether we stay with the current vendor that we have or we research other pieces, that, that could be a very large project to the scale of Power School at that point. Long-term, do we need to look at having a webmaster? We may, however, with the communication specialist job that's posted now, a lot of the job duties there are going to be to update and maintain the website. Interviews start this week. So it's my short-term goal to have that person kind of jump in, get their hands wet and, and work on the website as well as the other job duties in that position. But it's not going to be a small project.
That was actually my next question. So thank you, the communication specialist position. I thought they were the ones that would be on the website. But even that position, they're going to take a, maybe a lead role, but you're still going to have people from different schools or how do you add into it?
Correct. Every school has someone that's been trained on the website, and they're supposed to be updating their content. Superintendent has sent out multiple emails, you know, touching base with people. The district side, there are a lot of variables and there are a lot of players. And that's why, you know, Mr. Farias and myself and members of his team have been trying to keep updated where we can. But we also have, you know, other pieces of job responsibilities and sometimes that does get put to the back burner.
Sure. Like, for example, board docs, because I was given it and kind of maybe showed me how to do a couple of things and that was pretty much it. The trainings are always seem to be like at 3:00 in the afternoon. I mean, I've used plenty of vacation hours to come to meetings. That's acceptable. But I, I mean, I can't, you know. So if we could schedule something, maybe even on a Saturday morning or after 5:00 o'clock, that would be helpful. I could do it from my house remotely. You could give me a book. I'll read it. I'm not for spending money. I agree with Mr. Aguirre. It is another way we can do this cheaper than why not? But I want to make sure that it provides us the same. I definitely don't want to go back to big binders. Because to me, it's just, not only are they cumbersome and what have you, ready as strong. Am I going to build an addition to my house? So what I had to do when I first started and I wasn't on board docs yet, I had to shred all of them because it's a lot of, some stuff you don't want out there, right? So I felt uncomfortable just leaving all these big binders all out in my house. So in terms of that, I think it keeps information secure. I think it, it makes it easy for me to go back and like look at a meeting. Like, wait, I think we mentioned this in June. Let me go back and look at June. Let me go back and look at this. But I would like maybe, can you write notes in it? Is there a way to write notes in board docs? See, that would be helpful to me. I did not know that. Because I make notes on a separate piece of paper while I'm looking at it. So I'm, I'm all for getting rid of it after April, but I would like us to.
Have some of the.
Maybe have some explanation. Somebody come and give us a greater explanation of all the capabilities of board docs, whether it's at this meeting or if we have a training, you know, in the evening or on the weekend or something, so that I have a clear understanding of what it's capable of and what we possibly be losing out of if we no longer have it. And if we look at it and we go, oh, no, we can do all this on using Google Docs and using, you know, whatever, then I'm fine with that as well. But I wouldn't be able to say today, I don't want it anymore because I don't know what I'm getting rid of. You know? I don't know what it's capable of.
The superintendent asked me today to get in touch with board docs. I have never spoken to the company because that, that software package really never fell under the realm of technology. It was always under, you know, the superintendent's office slash school committee area. So now that I'm going to take ownership of it, and you guys know with the Power School piece, we will vet the product out. We will get the people in here. We will ask the correct questions. And then we will internally look at if we can indeed build the same functions on a website with Google Docs. Do I think it's possible? Yes. Do I think it's going to be very time-consuming upfront? 100%. So we will look at both sides and, and we'll report back to the committee and we can move forward from there.
Yeah, I think that's good. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just a couple of comments on that. So one of the things I would like to get, because I've tried for over two weeks to look on the website, search inside the drive to say, board docs training. We had training. There was people here at a public meeting. I can't find it where it goes. I couldn't get a copy of anything of a video that we ever had of the training that we already did. So I would like to request that as well as requesting all emails that relate to the board docs decision be sent to the full committee so we can all get a picture of how this happened, who was the players involved and what are their promises that they were going to do. I can't find it and I've worked like a, a lot of time trying to figure out on the website. When I look at the website, Mr. Cabral, my, that when you answer the question that we have people, the problem is, is that we have people that are trained, but they're not required to do it. And as a problem that we have here in this district is we don't hold people accountable to do their jobs. So people are trained at every place and every department to actually update your, your website. And we don't hold people accountable. I don't need, I'm not looking for you to comment, but I'm just saying, that's what's happening. You go through the entire website. There's things that shouldn't be that way. That's just a fact. But this point here of contracts, Mr. and Madam Superintendent, I think the problem is, is when I look at, it says contracts, I look at that as we're approving a contract. I think that's kind of common sense, that, that part of the meeting is we say, we're going to approve the contracts. We're not approving the contracts. What we're approving at this time is the bill for the contract. So that's part of my frustration is when I see the, part of the meeting for contracts come up and we say, here's the contract for the thing. No, the contract isn't now. The decision on this contract for board docs, if we look back at the information, was in July. So in July, when we have year three coming up, before that time, we should have a, somebody to say, do we want to go with year three? But what we do here is we just keep kicking it and nobody says it in time. So then three, four months later, we've already approved it. We're already working on it. We're already having it. And then we approve the bill. So I think we need to look at when we put it in contracts, maybe divide it up into bills. Because technically speaking, I don't even know why we're voting on it as a contract because we already approved the contract three years ago. So if we're not going to deny it, why are we sitting here saying it? Because it makes it look like we're not doing our due diligence if we're not looking at the contract. So I think that's something that you should look at because I just keep on getting frustrated and I, and it, it's because of that reason. This contract was July. So absolutely no way, even if we, we talked about it earlier last week, that this contract was already done. So now it's almost like the same discussion that we had before. We owe a bill. We don't owe a contract. With that, I yield.
Okay. So since as Mr. Aguirre pointed out, we already did vote to approve it. This was a discussion and we're going to wait for further updates on board docs. There's really not much we can do right now. Item 12-8, first reading, Superintendent's recommended FY 2024 budget priorities is presented by Maria Potts.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Discussion on our budget priorities.
One, just one question.
Mr. Aguirre?
Looking through old meetings, I think that we are still in the process of the goals, coming back. So I see these as kind of go hand in hand. So I was just looking for some feedback on when the.
Right. We still have not received the targets from DESI. As soon as we do, certainly can, or I can just change the, the targets and not use the DESI targets. We've always used them for, most superintendents use them for their goals, but certainly we can just change that.
My own personal opinion is these go together. So when we do the goals, this, the priority should match the goal. So we might want to look if it's not coming in, either do something different. That's only my only thought.
Okay.
You all set, Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Almeida?
So just, just a point, just a comment. So on Thursday, I went to, I had a Masbo meeting on Thursday. And it was pointed out that because we have a new governor in office that she has until the middle of March to submit her budget for Chapter 70. And so with that being said, it's been a while since we had a new governor, but it kind of throws our timeline out of whack because I really can't submit a budget to you guys until we know what those figures are. So with that being said, I will be resubmitting a new budget timeline to you with that point. So the process will be starting later this, at this time. And I know it's going to kind of conflict with the charter because we have the charter, the city charter is set, you know, the way that it is. But at this, you know, it's kind of out of our hands because of the new governor coming on board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight.
That's also going to impact the city.
Yes.
Mr. Almeida and I had a brief discussion about that and I did not relay that message to Bridget, but I'm going to send it to her right now. So we'll, we'll work on a timeline that's amenable to all groups going forward. But we do anticipate a little bit of a moved timeline.
Don't we know from the Student Opportunity Act roughly what we're going to get?
It's, I guess we could say I kind of have an idea, but not, not really. We have a, we have a webinar. I actually have a webinar this week on Thursday just to give you a little help, but it's not going to be exact. So it's, it's not as easy as it seems. I'll, I'll just say that.
Yeah. The only reason why I'm saying is I think that, from what I recall, they commit to, they made a commitment, you know, each year. And I believe that the legislature is going to keep that commitment.
Correct.
So even if we did a rough number, like we're going to get $10 million more this, next year than we got this year. I would, I would rather suggest that we do a budget based on a $9 million increase or something like that and go through our process the way we go, rather than have us wait and then have it all be condensed. That's just one member's opinion, that we know we're going to get 9 million. You know, lower it a little bit, but I believe that they're going to fund each year as it is. So we wouldn't be adding new stuff, but I think we could do the process. But as you come forward, we'll take votes as needed.
We'll get a more hard line going forward. Anything further? Item number 12-9 is mine, discussion of citizens input.
I need a vote to accept the first.
I'm sorry, guys.
First read.
It just said first read.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Well, there was a motion.
I'm glad it wasn't me for once. It's been me all night. I'm going to ask the, motion to table the citizens input question for now.
Second.
Motion second. I just got to get some more information. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Can I ask you just a, a question on that?
Sure.
So the document that we had had, it looked like two, one was council and one was the city. The documents that we got.
Hold on. On a motion to table? Hold on.
No, no. I was trying to listen to Kevin. I was distracted.
It's not debatable, a motion to table, Kev. I'll talk to you after. It's not debatable. I, we already had a motion.
I just was commenting on the, the lack of information that we got. That's all.
But he said it's not debatable. I'm sorry. Mr., Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes, with a comment. I agree with Mr. Aguirre that there really wasn't a ton of information. So if we can get some more prior to.
There's no discussion on this, Ms. Roderick. I'm sorry.
Just making comment.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12-10 is a second read to approve the central.
Motion approved, second reading.
Of the central office. I have a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion on the salary schedule? Mr. Aguirre?
What, what is the motion for?
I agree. A second read and vote to approve.
For what?
The salary schedule.
Madam Superintendent, do you have any comment?
Well, as we discussed the last time, you have before you either 5% increases from the bottom at the top of the range, as well as a 10% increase from the bottom and the top of the range. The document before you lists the days worked. I believe we were asked for that last time, as well as the people that are under that particular person. We certainly have S-NON positions from central office. You have the, ranging from the assistant superintendents to the CIO, et cetera. So we know that we have an FRA contract that with increases has brought people there butting up against people who are actually supervising them. And, you know, I think that we've had this discussion earlier today. If we're going to recruit and retain and be competitive, we do need to look at our salary scales and make sure that they're more comparable to, to others.
Mr. Almeida?
My comment was just about what, what are we voting on?
The salary schedule you have in front of you.
Oh, you want me to say whether, recommend a 10%? My recommendation would be the 10%. Yes.
This is why I'm asking because I think we need to focus on, this is complicated. This is not, not complicated. This is, there's big differences between what we get presented and what we don't. So when we just say, like, we're going to vote for it, no, there's two options here. We have two different documents, but what are we, what are we having, like 5%, 10%? I, I think that there's, obviously some work went into this to try to organize it, to figure out what's happening. And I think that we need a presentation relative to what is it that's here? And how is this going to help us to move in the right direction? But when I asked what it was for was because it's two different.
Scales.
Scales. And I think without a discussion, I don't know how we can say one or the other. There's also pieces in it at level two. I think that needs to be, to be looked at because we have people. Because we have people that, what does that mean? Level two, four-plus years? Does that mean the person's own experience? Does that mean the person's only in the district? I think some of those things pose further questions for us. So I'd like to hear a presentation, as was listed.
So one of the things that I did in looking at this was to look at the ranges that were established. In some cases, the ranges were set several years back, and are a little bit outdated. And in some cases, I also used the information that I got from MASPA, which is the Mass Association of School Personnel Administrators, and, and looked at the ranges for similar-sized districts. So one of the options that you have is to sort of make a shift in the scales at the top and the bottom end, and move them 5%. In some cases, at certain levels, particularly at the upper levels of school district administration, it seems like there's been sort of a little bit of a jump in the competitive salaries that, that people are using. So what I have before the committee is two separate options. A 5% scale, which just shifts the numbers, 5% at the low end and 5% at the top end, which gives you a little bit of breathing room over the current scales. And secondly, similar to what we have in the principal's scale, is something that recognizes somebody who has experience in the position in, in, in the school district. So four, four years or more. And that could be four years at another district, or it could be four years within this district, as long as it's a similar position, and that's verified. So, so the, the option would be 5 or 10%. And a third option that the committee may want to consider is moving a shifting scale, which matches what we're doing with our collective bargaining agreements. So you could take one scale and adopt it, and then maybe adjust over time, similar to what you did with the principal's scale, so that you're not coming back every couple of years unless there's some radical change in the competitive market for, for district-level administrators. What I've tried to do in front of you there is to give you the salaries of the people underneath them, and then a per diem rate. That's what's in that center column that you see going down. And that's scaled, again, for the number of days. I've put that next to the title of the person they're managing, how many days in each year they work, as well as the number of days for the administrator that supervises that area.
Any questions, Mr. Agia?
I have a couple more. So the other piece of this that I think is, is sort of confusing on what we vote on, not so much on the information, is we have SNON contracts all over this document. And those are always voted on under a separate discussion. I think they're here for purposes of...
Comparison.
Like, there's a few positions on here that the superintendent needs to have some flexibility on. But as we approve it, if we don't say what we're approving, we're approving all of this stuff. And I think that there's, there's way too much on here, in my opinion, to approve without having a, a long discussion on each of the various items. I think there's some that are more important than others. But the, the lower, the pieces that are in here that are not in yellow, I think are, are part of this document that I'm seeing. And I don't know if that was the, I don't think that was the purpose in general, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, I'm seeing things that are, I don't think are meant for the, this was meant for the central office, assistant superintendents, superintendents, CIO, that type of thing. Not necessarily all the other. The other stuff, I think, is background.
Right.
But there's information in here that if we approve, it's going to lock us into certain things as well.
Right, we're, we're not asking you to. The, the positions underneath are so that you can have a frame of reference, right, in comparison, to see. So if, if, for instance, if I'm looking at the page that has the 10% increase in, in the bottom and the top, if you look at the first one, the 143 to 159, and if you look at the people under that are FRAA, that's for your reference to see where they're standing in comparison to that person.
I also think that this doesn't determine a salary. It just determines a range for posting purposes, and gives you some flexibility as to, you know, when we actually hire somebody new to the district, that comes before you anyway. So, but it at least gives you the range for, for the purposes of trying to post and recruit talent.
I, I get that. Just that we're, if we're approving this document, it's a whole, it's a whole piece of the, you know, some of the other positions on the right, they have, like, there's figures in the level two, administrative assistance, there's transportation coordinator, like, there's other positions that have stuff filled in, including some of Mr. Cabral's positions, not his, but the ones under him. I think that's confusing.
But we're only asking you to approve the highlighted pieces. The others are just for a frame of reference. Those are, for instance, that's a good point. You have all of Mr. Cabral's. Those are all SNONS that we bring to you, right, for those, with those ranges. We're at, what we're looking at is the highlighted pieces, but we included that information so that you could have a frame of reference to see where they stand in comparison to. Maybe it's too confusing, but we're not asking.
I apologize. I know it's a dense document, but I did want you to have the information to try to be able to scale your, your comments and your understanding of the position.
So it's only 14 positions that we're actually looking at, with the yellow lines?
No, seven. Seven, it's only seven. This is one as a 5% proposed, and one as a 10%. Seven positions.
Mr. Mayor?
It's just the senior staff.
Just to be clear, that was the assumption I was going to, yeah? That was the assumption I was under, was that we were just approving the highlighted portions. But Mr. Agia, just for me to clarify, the four years plus, that's four years in our district, right?
Four years in your district, or four years in a similar position, similar-sized district? In other words, relevant experience to the position.
So it's four years of relevant experience, not four years of this district?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the seven positions, motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
5% or a 10? Hang on, Mr. Agia. What are we focusing on here for a move, to vote on when we finally get there? Are we looking at 5 or 10?
Well, our recommend, my recommendation would be the 10%, because the 5% is not going to get us to where we need to be to put some distance between...
So the discussion should go around the 10% page. Mr. Agia, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I think that when, with these type of positions, I think we're overthinking it to put the level two and the four years' experience or what have you. So what I think would be clearer is, is a range, just so that you know what the low is and the high. So we currently are offering 125 to 145 for positions, like, as the range for this type of position. I think that's much clearer than this particular piece, so that when you advertise a job, you, you don't necessarily put, well, if you have four more years' experience, you can, you know, we can add it on later. Truth in advertising to recruit the right people would be, we're advertising at 140 to, like, the first one, assistant superintendent curriculum instruction, the low would be 143, the high would be 167. But what if the person didn't come in, if they didn't have the four years, but they were making 162 at their other job? You know, like, it gets, I think it muddies the waters by adding a second level for these particular high-level positions. I think what the superintendent is looking for is some flexibility to have a range that's higher than the people that are in the union making less money, working less days and actually making more per day. So I think it's, it's sort of, I think it's, it's a little bit confusing, the dividing them up. The other piece of it is, I want to feel confident that we're working towards solving the problem, not just giving more resources. When I look at the first step, that first one, assistant superintendent, the daily rate is less than most of the people that are working under her. The other one's the same thing. Like, we have union positions that are more money per diem than the person that's in charge of that entire department. So something has to give here. And I know we've been saying this, but I haven't seen a plan that's going to address it. We just keep on making the problem worse.
So, so if you look at the, the way that first position is structured, and you have two tiers, right? It's not like a union contract where you could go down and across and do that. It doesn't work that way. You could use a low of 143 and a high of the, the number to the far right, and then that gives you your range. And that would be it. Now, when you interview the person and you look at their experience, you would decide whether or not, it's not designed to be a, a line and step chart. It's designed to be a range. And then you could look at that from a standpoint of saying, okay, based on the person's experience, four-plus years, five-plus years, whatever that might be, that would put them in that second tier. So you'd be looking at that second range. That's the only reason that exists there.
But what I'm saying is, that's for internal, that's for superintendent to figure out internally. I think you just said what I was saying, that the, that top one, if we're going to approve the 10%, should be 143 is the low, and 167 is the high.
Correct.
The piece of the four is more for the superintendent to decide, why does she want to pay somebody on the higher end versus the lower end? But if we're being open, that's what the range should be. It shouldn't be the, the details in the middle.
I, I think the reason it's broken into two pieces is just, that's the guideline we'd be looking at based on levels of experience versus, you know, whether they're going to slide towards the higher end or the lower end based on the person in the, in the job. But you would use the low and the high as the range.
How can you, anybody justify somebody getting, being in a top position making, let's say, $591 a day, and another person making 686, or 623, or like, more per day, and that other person's working 243 days? Like, how can, how can we correct this? Like, I keep saying it's the same problem, but I never see a solution.
But that range is based on the lower end of the scale. If you were to do the per diem out to the high end of the scale, you would be able to address that.
But if they're working, the person that's above should make more per day than the person below them in most, most normal situations. I think that's fair to say, right? So how do we address it? So if we vote for this today, how are we going to address everything else? I think one of the things we've got to look at is, is the days. And I'm not telling people to work more or less, but we're telling people that we want them, take them into the most high-pressure job. We want them to have the most stress. And we're going to tell them, you're working 243 days. But people that are below you that don't have that same level of stress and all that responsibility, work 215 days. Like, I think that's somewhere, never mind the range, but I think the days, the benefits, the time, I think, needs to be looked at as well. Because we're not going to get what we need if we just keep doing the same thing without changing it. It's just going to, everybody's going to be making more, 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 and it's, it's, at some point, we've got to say enough's enough and do something different. So I'll make an amendment to the motion that we take the low and the high, under 10%, and call that the range for those seven positions.
That makes sense.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mayor, sorry, I just looked at something.
Mr. Agia?
The bottom one, it says CIO.
Yep.
Current 10%, like, I don't know what that means, because that, all the other ones have figures in it.
Numbers.
And this doesn't have figures, so that's a problem.
You mean for a range?
There's nothing in that line under the 10% one. If you go CIO, it says 113, 600, 243 days. And it's, is that just saying you want to, you want to add 10% as going to be the low? And like, there's no number in it. That's why I was wondering why.
The current range on that position, as approved two years ago when the position was created, was 110 to 130.
110 to 130.
110 to 130.
But that, that needs to be adjusted. Also, that, that contract needs to be, because the, if you were pointing out before, in the CIO, how people under the CIO were making more. There is a huge discrepancy here between our CIO and...
Right, well, what I heard Mr. Coogan just say was, that current position is 110 to 130.
That was the original.
Using, using the same logic that we used everywhere else, we added 10% to the ranges. Why is it not like that for this?
Yeah, it should be 120...
So if it was 110 to 130, then now it should be 10% added, or what, the same calculation for the other ones? If that's what we're using.
It doesn't say anything. It doesn't, it doesn't have that on ours.
Oh.
It's on hers.
It says 120 to 148.
I don't have that.
That's right.
The one that I'm seeing, it just says...
No, you're right.
Current 10%, it doesn't make any sense.
She's got it on hers. It's 120 to 148.
Do you have the new sheet?
That's the one that I passed out.
Ms. Agia, does he have the new one though?
I don't think he has the correct.
She passed one out tonight, Kev. I think it's...
I got, and made copies, was this.
Okay.
That's what I have.
It's 120 to 148. They have it on news. We didn't, no, we got them. She passed it out tonight.
Okay, so I, I think the moral of the story is, we should be doing the same thing for all seven positions.
It is, there is.
So that's all. I, I'm not looking to prolong it, just that it should be in there.
Got a motion and a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick? Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay.
I think we got to make a motion on the full motion, because I had amended, I had made a motion to amend. So now we need a mo, the motion for the full, I think somebody already made a motion.
To improve the entire range, as Mr. Agia pointed out. I need a motion, a second.
Correct. Mr. Harp had made the motion, and Ms. Larrabee, second.
Just a vote.
Yeah?
Just a vote.
All right, so let's have the vote here.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12, 12.11 is a discussion and vote to approve the invitation from the MSBA into the Accelerated Repair Program for the Robert L. Maderis Resiliency Preparatory Academy to appropriate the sum of $100,000 to fund the procurement of the owner's project manager and design firm for the feasibility study as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Well, I have to make a separate motion.
Can I get a second on this?
We need whoever makes the motion to write, there's a certain language he's going to read.
Oh, okay.
I need to state the language.
Yep.
Yeah, basically, it's just, I neglected to add that language at the last meeting. So this is strictly to put that language into effect.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion that Fall River Public School District appropriate the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of paying cost of feasibility study for the windows and doors accelerated repair project of the Robert L. Maderis Resiliency Preparatory Academy located at 290 Rock Street, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the Fall River Public School District may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of Fall River Public School District's Chief Operating Officer. The Fall River Public School District acknowledged, acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost of the Fall River Public School District incurs in excess of any grant approved by the, and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the Fall River Public School District.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I have a number of items on 13 for your information, retirements, resignations, appointments.
Motion to approve 13.1, 2, 3, and 4.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee, Mr. Agia?
I'm just looking to get some information. I saw there was a press conference about buses, and we haven't gotten any information on that at all as a committee, and I'm just curious if anybody has any info?
I have a little bit. We got, we were granted, um...
The city, the city.
City, meaning we, the city. Thank you, Maria Potts. 11 school buses, very similar to what they got in Bedford, and the infrastructure. We applied for a grant for electric buses. We have to partner with one of our bus companies, and both of our bus companies were at the press conference. I do not believe we finalized the plans yet. The idea behind the buses is that you take a gas or a diesel bus out of service, and you use an electric one. Am I right, Mr. Pacheco? So that's what we have to work with our partners who supply our transportation for our kids. It's not finalized yet. We have the infrastructure, we have the buses, and they are going to come in in dribs and drabs. There is also some additional electric bus grants that are coming up that we're going to work on, but we're not home yet. But it was a very positive day for the city of Fall River and transporting our kids.
The only reason why I ask is we have multi-year contracts with bus companies that we've approved. So the only thing I would say is I think we should be more involved in it to get some info, to know what's happening, what's not happening, because if we don't get the transportation right, it comes on us. And I've always had the issue of, it's you, and you take it all. But we, we vote on certain things. We have... but we, we vote on certain things, we have policies, we have those procedures, but now we're gonna give buses to there, how is it working? That's all, I think we should get some info.
It's a little confusing, I will agree with you there, 'cause I, even I've been following it, and I'm like, how is this gonna work out? But I do have, believe we have good partners with Tremblay, Amarals, and Whalings that'll work with us, they know it's an opportunity for them as well as us, and I think we can put it together.
I appreciate any information you could send, thanks.
Anything further? Do we have a, a request for executive session?
Yes, we would.
You wanna read them first?
Sure.
National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve the executive session minutes for November 14, 2022, regular school committee meeting. National Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated November 15, 2022, filed by Patrick Higgins regarding the October 17, 2022, regular meeting of the school committee. Mr. Higgins alleges that the Fall River School Committee intentionally violated the open meeting law by not accepting their meet, uh, meeting minutes in a timely manner. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of Fall River School System represented by the Fall River Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government employees, including without limitation paraprofessional parent workers and clerks of Fall River School System that are paid by federal and state grants and represented by the Fall River Public Schools Government Programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at 2501 South Main Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, as the chair has declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Elizabeth Lewis, coordinator of data assessment and accountability. We would reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, can we get a roll call, Deb, please?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. In recess for executive session. Back in session, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey?